Can we call the meeting to order? Please rise.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, in your republic, of course, stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our troops and our first responders who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. I want to remind everybody that the meetings are recorded and they're put on YouTube, so mic's not on. So, anyone... Can you hear? Anyway, so anyone who speaks is going to be recorded and it'll be on YouTube. And by staying, you're giving consent to that. First up is public comment from visitors and first on the agenda is Mary Ann Michaels.
Good evening. Hi, Mary Ann Michaels. I'm the president of the Leadership and Recreation Commission, and I have my fellow commissioners on this here meeting. And I just talked about it.
There's a button on your big thing.
Okay. Can you... Hello?
Just trying using your best voice, please.
Good evening. We wrote this collaboratively as REC, so I'm going to read it to you, and I'd appreciate if I could finish before anyone, before we have a discussion. Good evening. We are here before you to get some clarification and some understanding as to council's motion last month to put pickleball lines on the tennis courts. This has been repeatedly discussed, and we thought that our recommendation that additional lines not be placed on the courts was settled. The reasoning behind our recommendation is that additional lines on the tennis courts can be very confusing to tennis players, and the borough is currently providing four indoor courts for anyone who wants to participate in pickleball. With new outdoor courts in the planning, we do not understand the urgency to put the lines down without discussing our previous recommendation. Ignoring our wishes at the very least should have led to a discussion with us on important things like, one, the size of the pickleball courts, the pickleball community plays doubles, not singles; two, the site on the tennis courts needed to be perpendicular and not parallel with the tennis courts; and three, the line color needed to be a different color than those for tennis, i.e. the courts are blue and the lines now are blue. All of these should have been discussed with us. The lines that were put down are not only distracting, they are useless for the needs that the pickleball community requested. I was here for the pickleball part of the public comment at your last meeting. No one ever brought up putting pickleball lines on the tennis courts, so I had no idea there was going to be a motion made and carried later in the meeting to do so. The way that this was handled and the total disregard for REC's recommendation makes us question our role within the borough and the value we believe we are delivering. The bottom line is that you cannot give us all the responsibility for parks and REC and no authority, as this would not be a beneficial or effective relationship. I hope you agree that in the future, any action taken against our recommendation would at least warrant a conversation with us, so that we can hopefully find an outcome that is mutually acceptable. Thank you.
I mean, we... Well, first of all, I made no motion. I made no second. I actually didn't even vote because at the time I was acting magnanimous.
No, I didn't.
And the council pretty much voted unanimously, I think with the exception of Ryan, to put, you know... We did listen to your recommendations. You had kicked the pickleball thing back to us two years ago. We decided to table it because, well, basically because we didn't want to put lines on the court at that time. In discussions with multiple people who use tennis courts with pickleball lines on them and the overwhelming support that people came in, I think, I can't remember the exact count, but I think we had somewhere around 30 people to support pickleball, I was surprised you left because it wasn't agenda item. So, I mean, it wasn't over. That was really just the public comment phase of the pickleball stuff. So, we did vote. We did discuss. And it wasn't... We chose to put them on one court instead of two, so you would have one pristine court. Most of the tennis people we spoke to in Maryland, I mean, most of the courts in Maryland have the pickleball lines on them. Perpendicular would not work. Actually, Andy initially thought perpendicular would be a good idea, but then the people serving for pickleball would have their backs to the tennis people and would probably get beaned with the ball at some point. So, we turned them because it was recommended by the company, it was a professional company that we hired. The color of the lines is based on what their recommendation was. They recommended a line that would not jump out at you or be obtrusive to tennis players. So, basically, it's from the same color palette that the court itself is. So, that's why the blue on blue was chosen, so the pickleball people would use, would be able to use the court, but it wouldn't bother the tennis people. I think I answered most of your questions. The court is, the pickleball courts are doubles courts. I mean, they're the standard size for a pickleball court.
No, they're not.
Yeah, they are. They've been measured multiple times.
Standard pickleball court, it's usually Richard Goad, he's on the commission. Standard pickleball court is 30 by 60.
That's the playing area is 30 by 60.
These are 44 by 20.
That is the actual court.
Which is a singles, which is if you look at it, it's a singles pickleball court.
It's not. No, there isn't.
There is no singles pickleball court. And I just measured that court, and it's right on the money as far as the size goes.
It's a standard court.
With no standard deviation at all.
What's a standard?
One-eighth inch to three-quarters of an inch.
No, I'm talking about the size of the playing area.
Playing area is 30 by 60.
Correct.
Wait, court size is 20 by 44. There's a difference. Your playing area is so that you have an area outside of the court that you can play. Otherwise, you could have a wall right there. You have to have... You have to have five feet on each side so that you can go outside the lines to play. And then you have to have eight feet in back of the back line on each side so that you can play. That gives you your 60. Believe me, I was confused, and I... If you look at a pickleball court, this is the pickleball court itself. The court is 20 by 44. It sits on a 30 by 60 asphalt or test-type surface. So, that's how it works. If we were to build a new pickleball court today, we would make it 30 by 60, but the court itself would be 20 by 44, painted lines on the court.
Andy, I have a whole pamphlet here that tells you all about it.
I think, I just, I really just want to answer.
Okay, well, then I guess.
But yeah.
I was very confused this week, too, so I took a lot of time and looked it up, and I found the same thing.
And I guess that...
I was very confused about playing area versus the court size.
I think, I think to answer your last question, which was, is your role, I mean, your role is the same as our role. It's to serve the citizens. And if there is an overwhelming desire for pickleball, we have to figure out a way to...
We are putting in outdoor courts.
Well...
So, when I left, okay, with all due respect, because I've heard that from a couple of you about me leaving, okay, I stayed here for the pickleball meeting. Not one pickleball player, they were so thrilled that we were putting in outdoor courts. I never in a million years thought a motion was going to be made when we're talking about four outdoor courts that are going to go in. It now sounds like it's going to be a little greater than a year, that we would be making a motion to add pickleball lines to the tennis courts, when we specifically said on numerous occasions, put them on the basketball courts. Hoarding off part of the parking lot, put them there. Put them somewhere where it's not going to interfere with another sport.
I'm sorry, Mary Ann, but the basketball court is actually used far more than the tennis court.
Let me finish, please.
Well, you interrupted me, so I thought it was a lie there, but I ain't interrupting.
Okay, well, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'll sustain, sustain.
Okay, I thought you were done talking. I thought you just told me my role. But anyway, when I went to leave the meeting, any one of you could have said, hey, whoa, you might want to stick around, because the pickleball agenda of pickleball courts, which is what the agenda said, is going to involve a motion of putting lines on the tennis courts.
I'm not sure that any of us really, I, first of all, I can't remember who made the motion. Does anyone remember?
You brought in that you should put lines there.
He made the motion.
I think Dave or Vanelle Saffron.
If he was the mayor, acting mayor, how could he have brought up?
The same, the same way this mayor breaks things off.
I thought that the mayor all broke ties and then...
No, 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 I didn't.
He can be a part of discussion within the, and break things off.
I thought it was the mayor does.
Last year, last year, we all were against the lines because the cost factor, what it would do to the tennis court, it would do damage. And someone in the audience, you know, because I, I don't know what the name was, sort of said that there would be no damage. Now, in communicating with our mayor, I found out indeed that there is damage.
There is damage.
See, there is, and so it becomes costly. So, of course, I would be against it.
I'm sorry, what damage are you talking about?
That'll be in my mayor's report.
That's not from, that's not from the paint.
It's not from... No, that was from kids hurting it with the skateboard. It doesn't have anything to do with pickleball.
All right. But anyway, because, you know, it's a cost factor if it damages the tennis courts. So, we were, all of us were, I think, we thought, well, there would be no damage whatsoever. And of course, the kids did it. But we were going to probably bring it up today, and, you know, and I knew it would come up, it would come up, because we sure don't want to damage it and use taxpayers' money and we'd have to redo that, and you could understand that. It's a great sport.
It is. I'm not against.
I can hardly wait to take my lessons and do it.
Yeah, I'm not against.
But we're gonna, we're now going to have to find another place, which I'm certain you would understand.
I do understand, but the motion also was made to put temporary lines down, and they're permanent lines, which means that the courts are going to have to be redone at the end. But I still say that putting them on the basketball courts would have been the best solution. But needless to say, we were against it, and to me, a discussion still, if we work together or we're going to have a relationship, a discussion still should have been had with us, even though, hey, let's table it a month. Did it have to be done right now, when you knew we were against it, without you coming to us and saying, hey, we think that we need it, and in my mind, I think two people have come, right, is it, like, two people have wanted it, you know, 30 are sitting in the room, but most of them, I think, are going to still be playing up there. It did not solve the problem. It also takes away from our indoor program that we're running, you know, for the community. We are putting outdoor courts in. We're doing the best we can to move forward with that. But a discussion still should have been had with us, when you knew we were against it, versus throwing a motion out there, approving it, and going against us, and then just letting me know, you know, that whatever we think doesn't matter.
The feeling on the board was, when we finally got to that point, two hours into the meeting, that we were going to discuss pickleball, we didn't, we didn't know how long or how much it was going to cost to build the outdoor, the pad between there and the road. So, because it was going to take a fair amount of time before anybody was going to be able to use anything, this was an interim solution that would stay in place when the new was there, when new was there also. That was the only thing. We're not trying to step on anybody's toes. We're trying to augment and give somebody something to do now.
I think, I think to your point of more discussion, I agree with that 100 percent. I mean, and correct, if I'm wrong, but I mean, I've been trying to get REC and council together for a long time. I think Ryan will corroborate the fact that, you know, we said, if you guys need anything, come to us, and we can talk about it. So, I don't think we're trying to relegate your role to less than what it is. I think that where money is involved and where modifications to the park goes, that is part of council's job. We decide what to do with that. So, that's what we did. We knew that there was a need, and we tried to help fill it. We didn't put it on both courts, because we wanted to leave one court that would be entirely tennis. But now there is some sharing involved, so, and it's not going to step on anyone's toes as far as the tennis program goes. Tennis has priority for the tennis program. That's, that's going to continue.
And I need to be very clear that I'm not that initial.
When I go down there, I, you know, pickleball will be asked to leave, but they're there
when our program...
Absolutely. We agree with that.
And in the future, though, as I said in here, I really don't want this to happen again, because I do find it completely disrespectful of us, that you knew how we felt, you repeatedly said how we felt, and you went ahead and went without, not a month when the guild went on, saying, hey, let's talk to REC about this. Let's see if there's anything we can do, or let's tell them where we're coming from. I think that would have been smooth and fine, and, you know, if it ended up this was the only solution, it was the only solution. But in the future, I'm hoping that, you know, we handle this a little bit differently.
You want us to do something more than put it on the agenda, and you could have spoken just like you're speaking now.
What did the agenda say? What did the... The agenda that made us said, to me, when I left, you guys were all talking about outdoor pickleball. Anybody at any time, I mean, and I stayed for, I was going to say, but the gentleman about his basketball who'd been taken from him, that went on for a good hour, and I was like, I have to go. I mean, it went on for a long time. I might be...
Pickleball court installation.
That's all it says. So, to me, you guys talked about putting in outdoor, what pickleball? So, pickleball installation in no way would have registered with me, that you were talking about putting lines on the tennis courts. And that, what we talked about is what you were going to talk about.
I understand what you're saying, but I guess if you're, as president of REC, if you see that there's a REC item on the agenda, then that would be, it would be good to stay for that.
I think where this went sideways is when it was determined that the courts could not be used by how they said that they were using them, and then it was arbitrarily decided without consultation from any of them, that you would switch the direction. I think that's where the fracture happened.
No, I, I, I don't agree with the word arbitrarily. The people came in who put pickleball courts all up and down the coast. In fact, I thought it was going to be perpendicular. Andy recommended perpendicular. When they came in, they said, no, you can't do it that way. They have to be running with.
I think there should have been a good communication. About three weeks ago, I asked for a meeting between you, myself, and Ryan with some REC commission members because of this fracture that seems to be happening, and we all need to work together to serve our citizens the best. And I haven't got that meeting, and I would request again that we have this meeting to clarify things such as, such as this.
I'm available whenever, whenever REC wants to meet. I'm available.
I'd like to have a meeting.
I would like to, too, and I, but I do want to add, I'm sorry, I have to add this. We have a liaison with the borough, and that's, you know, we have a meeting. I've been on the REC commission for a long time. I've been president for a few years, and we report what we're doing and everything to our liaison, and that's our, and to me, anything that you needed additional, Mary Ann, you better be there personally, or Rich, or any of us. We need to know that, because we tell him everything. I report what we did in our meeting.
I want to just clarify one thing. The motion was made, and a motion can be made anywhere from call to order to the conclusion of the meeting.
Correct.
And anything can be motioned, and if it's seconded, then it comes up for vote. That's, this is just how it works. It was brought up during the pickleball committee.
Installation.
Yeah, about the meeting that we had. The discussion then led to the motion, which led to the second, and then the vote was what it was. So, there's no prescribed time to vote on it. You know, we could sit here and talk about courts right now, and then it's last mentioned in the agenda. You could bring it up before the end of the meeting.
Okay, so...
So, essentially, you would have to stay for the entire meeting to find out.
Okay, now, well, now I know I found out the hard way, but Rich is on the pickleball committee meeting, and tennis lines were never brought up. He went to the, he had one meeting.
And that's, and last month, I mentioned that during the meeting, that that was not what we, that not the intention that we wanted.
But in the...
There was never, no, we had no, during our, one committee meeting, there was no discussion about lining the tennis courts for pickleball, strictly how it was structured.
And everyone was saying, the committee meeting caused this, and I'm like, he's on the committee, and he said they never brought it up, so we're...
Because the motion was made, it was seconded, and then voted upon.
I understand. I can see how a motion can come up at any time.
No, I understand that, but I mean, they keep saying that it was the pickleball meeting back in the day.
To draw to a close, I think, you know, we'll have a meeting at your convenience, and let us know when, and we'll also try to keep you more informed, but pretty much, if we put it on the agenda, we advertise the means that we're going to be talking about, so.
Well, I just, court installation, and we was talking about the grants for putting outdoor pickleball, because that's all that was talking about.
The actual abolition of the discussion was, it's going to take us at least a year, not a little bit more, to get through a grant cycle in order to build courts. That was the discussion, and as Dave said, I think the discussion was also, it's going to cost more than what we thought it was going to cost, so we wanted to make sure we had grants in place to save taxpayer dollars. So, the interim method of that, and again, the pickleball people here said, yeah, we want to play outside. It's summertime, springtime, summertime, fall. We want to be outside. The interim step was, let's line one pickleball, or one, two pickleball courts on one tennis court to get through to where we could build the new courts.
And your liaison did decide with the recreation?
Yeah.
No, no, no. I appreciate that very much.
How many pickleball players do you have total?
Roughly, between daytime and nighttime, around 30.
How many of those are New Freedom residents?
I don't know the exact answer to that. I know we have a few Maryland residents that come up here. I know we have some Shrewsbury and Stewartstown. I think a majority of them are borough residents.
Yeah, I think it's important to realize that when we're using DCNR funds, you really can't ask how many are New Freedom residents, because it's a park for the citizens of Southern York County. If we're going to use state funds, we pretty much have to be open to whatever, whoever citizens come.
There was a question I wanted to know. Didn't say anything, but nobody else couldn't play. I just wanted to know.
Okay, and then the last thing I'm going to say is, is there anything in your agenda that requires me to stay for this entire meeting, because I have been at it all day, and...
I don't think there's anything on the agenda.
So, anything that I'm going to get blindsided with?
The only thing I can say is that, because we haven't had another meeting, the only thing that is on the committee meeting is the pickleball court installation committee.
What does that mean?
It's just, it's just an item on the agenda. We haven't had a meeting, so the only thing I can say is that I'll have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I think there should be a pickleball person on this committee, and I was consulted in deliberation.
Rich is...
That's why I included Rich.
Rich is obviously in the tennis camp.
No, he's not.
This is not, this is the outdoor courts. It's what we're talking about. I'm on the commission for the outdoor courts.
This is like the fox guarding the penthouses, and pickleball people look like redheaded stepchungs.
So, I, hold on, I just...
And I don't understand that, because we really should be brothers and sisters.
I know, but you're not. I don't know why you're taking it like that, but that's not...
So, the reason I included him is because he is running the pickleball program for New Freedom REC.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Exactly, exactly.
As far as I'm concerned, running the program, make somebody in that camp on this committee to have some technical knowledge and some input.
Yeah, he's definitely brought good ball.
So, that, just in summary, the lines are going to stay on the tennis court. It's the interim step, and hopefully we'll have enough money for, in the grants for the next coming year or a year and a half, that we'll be able to put outdoor pickleball courts up.
And get those lines in mid, when...
That would be in the longer range plan. Actually, there is some damage to the court already, so...
But that's state border damage, so...
Yes, correct.
And that's...
There's a hole in the tennis court.
Right there, the line, there's some line for the pickleball, yeah.
Yeah. It's like someone took a hammer.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I haven't been able to there, but they're not.
But they're on it all the time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me know when you want to leave.
Okay, I sure will.
Okay. Is Jack here? If Jack comes later, I guess we don't have him. I have a, and it's Mike Sharkey here.
I think, can you tell them seven? Wait till seven?
Yeah.
It's a couple minutes away.
Okay, I'm going to say something. It's actually from my president's report, but I'm going to say it now, so that it's been said in front of this meeting. I'm calling it a point of general privilege, which is a point that you do under Robert's rules, if you want to try to redress something or something that kind of bothered you, so. Basically, I'm just going to read it. "There have been comments made from this bench regarding staff performance. If anyone has a problem with performance specifics must be addressed with the employee at an executive session or through the personnel committee, not through insinuations or comments that the individuals do not have the opportunity to redress. Laws and ordinances are written to guide reasonable people. When people are not reasonable, the ordinances are difficult to enforce. Tall grass can be cut at the last minute, cars moved, cleanup started and not completed, for example. Last council, we had a fire pit issue. It was stated that the resident had no fire pit, and this turned out to not be true. The resident, as reported by SRPD, has a fire pit. The resident was not cited by police, and a council member stated the borough office should follow up in sight. This is not per the ordinance. The office did their job by reporting to the enforcement branch designated by the ordinance, the SRPD. Council has been remiss in their duty to provide clear direction to the borough office. For example, on one hand, we tell the office to issue warnings and fines and collect basketball hoops in the right of way, and on the other hand, council waives the fines and returns the basketball hoop. I don't care which it is, but we need to decide, are we going to enforce or warn and belenya? Criticizing office employees in public while offering them contradictory direction from council is creating hostile workplace. Our office staff and public works employees have saved the taxpayers many dollars, and they work diligently in service to the people of New Freedom, and I commend them for their service and dedication. I ask that all members who sit at this table treat them with the respect and dignity they have earned and deserved. Thank you." Next item is approval of minutes. That's what you said.
Yes.
So, here, hearing it. If it, if there's no, if no one has any objection, I was going to move the IGA discussion to the front of the meeting, so that Mike doesn't have to sit here the whole, go through the whole meeting. If no one objects, I can do that. In order to discuss the IGA, we need a motion, and the motion would be something to the effect that we are making a motion to begin the ordinance process and the advertising to accept the third amended and restated Joint Municipal Agreement, version two. Okay, I have a first to begin the ordinance and advertising process, and a second from INGO.
Can we do that? I mean, don't we just have to make a, a motion that we're gonna do it?
Oh, yeah, no, 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 we just made a motion, and now we're gonna, now we can discuss it. We're trying, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be any more Robert's rules oriented, so, there we go. Okay, um, did you wanna lead this, or?
We didn't do a redline version of this for council, so they can see where.
Yeah. Yeah, council has a redline version. And we can also use the executive summary if we want.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I should lead the way. But if you'd like to lead, then.
No, I have three of my own, so.
Oh, you want me to, sorry.
You were in the, uh, IGA.
Okay, no problem. Okay, um, first up is in Article One, Section A. I know, I'm hoping that everyone's had time to review this, at least on council. The notice to withdraw must be given by August thirty first, and it would take two years later on December thirty first to withdraw. So, in other words, you can't jump in in the middle of, you know, at the end of a budget cycle and say, I'm, I'm threatening to withdraw. You actually have to give notice, so it really takes twenty-eight months to withdraw from the police commission. This was felt to be, for a number of reasons, but primarily, this was to allow a sitting council time to think about it, to possibly, possibly the voters step in and make changes, or to allow town council meetings, so that if a person, of a municipality wanted to withdraw, it gave time to, uh, to make sure that that's what the public will actually want. I state that, okay?
Yep.
Okay, is there any discussion on that one?
Andy, like, I've got a bullet summary that goes in a little bit of a different order than the, uh, executive summary that the solicitor provided. It's, it's the same points, it's just in a little bit different order, they're kinda grouped.
Ah, I see, I see. I think I'm gonna stick with this, 'cause this tracks the redline version, that's okay. So, there's no discussion on the first one? Okay, I'll, I'll continue, we can come back if we need to. Section B was removed, uh, that was the Stewartstown buy-in section, and that already has happened. Uh, section C, um, is the buyout. So, now you've gone through your twenty-eight month of withdrawal, and you're, you're now done, so, but you're not really done. You still have an obligation, it's financial obligation for pensions and continuing operations of the police department, so that the police department doesn't feel a negative impact from you withdrawing. So, you waited your twenty-eight months, and now you owe basically one half of a year, spread out over five years, so it doesn't impact your budget negatively, the municipality's budget negatively. And so, it's split thirty, twenty-five, twenty, fifteen, and ten percent for five years, and it's kind of a buyout, and you, basically, you give half your budget during that time. During that time, you would not be receiving any police services, you would just be paying for the pension and the continued operation of the police department. The other side to that too is, and there was some discussion of it, if a, if a municipality decided to drop out, they could use that money to buy ours, and that would be a negotiation item. Um, there would be no need to, um, and also under section C, there's no need to define long-term obligations or anything money coming back to you from capital or anything like that, 'cause that just would, would stay with the members that are left. Questions? Okay, section F, which is now second.
Wait, I, I do have a question, maybe you might, you might be able to address that. This community that is saying they're gonna withdraw, okay? During that twenty-eight months, just say it's New Free. The first year, that when we're withdrawing, it's six hundred thousand dollars that we owe for police. We're gonna continue that. The second year, say our PPU's go up to six twenty-five. The third year, it goes to six fifty. Where does our fifty percent come in? At the six hundred, when we said we were gonna withdraw, or the six fifty at the end of that second year?
For a withdrawing member, what, and what Andy's talking about is an exit fee, which will be a total exit fee of one half of what your annual contribution is.
The last year?
And then it's.
Last year.
Right.
That's not real clear in here.
It, it's based on your last year, and it would include the recalculations at the end of your last year.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring that up during the IGA meetings, it's just in going over this and reading it.
Right.
It brought up that.
It would, it would be based on what your percentage is calculated.
Is the last year that you're part.
When you terminated.
Gotcha.
It, it does say, budget for the year ending, ending in the withdrawing member, municipality's withdrawal. So, that would be the end of.
I didn't know whether it was the withdrawal or the last year.
No, you're still there.
Okay.
You would still be a sitting member of the police commission until you actually leave.
I just want everybody to be aware and make sure that. Sorry.
That's not how this reads. It's, show me a percentage of one half of the average withdrawn number, demand activity allocation as the prior three years, including in which, in the year in which the withdrawal occurred, so you have to take those three years, average them, that's what you're paying.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, the new calculation of demand activity hasn't been covered.
Yeah, probably should, um, probably should have to make sure that it's clear enough. Are you okay with it?
I think it is, because the, I think what's really, I'm just gonna point out, is, uh, in here with the redline version, the examples are important. Because just having the text in there, but actually giving an example as a point of reference, and to make it clear, and that's clear in here, it says, uh, department's budget, uh, was two million dollars. It was three hundred thousand for that person, and then they're allocating that, you know, for five years. And that three hundred thousand was a five-year, or a three-year average.
Right, okay. Yeah, so we're good? Okay, no, no, that's good, I agree with you. Is that it, everyone?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that that was clear.
Okay. Uh, section F, uh, they says that you have to have a hearing no later than August first of the year, notice of withdrawal is given. And they must notify the commission of the hearing and the outcome thereof. So, all that means is that they have to have a public meeting, which would probably happen anyway.
It's similar to an existing provision.
Sure.
Which just specifies the dates.
Right. Okay, uh, section G, uh, dispersment of assets at termination of agreement and dis, disbanding would be based on demand activity allocation from last year of existence.
And that's just clarifying that demand activity calculation, that any, if there's a disbandment, any dispersment of assets in the event of disbandment is based on your percentage as of the last year.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is if the whole police commission gets away. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot that one, okay. 'Cause then, section H says, a withdrawing member, in other words, police commission stays, but a member withdraws, they get nothing in terms of assets, only dispersed assets when disbanding.
There's one thing that's a little bit confusing. I guess it gets cleared up in the second page, but demand activity is a new thing, and PPU's are going away. So, that's almost something we should talk about first or something, right?
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna talk about it now?
Well, just so we're on the same page.
Okay, what is it?
Okay, well, the, the demand activity, and, and I think Mike had the best example of that. Demand activity is when a police officer gets out of his car. So, otherwise, it's patrol time. There are only two codings on the police, um, time clock that are not demand activity. And that's patrol time and, help me out.
There's a, there's a, there's a activity code of motor patrol, there's an activity code of foot patrol.
Right.
Which would be the only.
Foot patrols a lot for that.
And that's not including, like, admin time, training, that type of.
Right, right. So, everything else is demand activity. I think the important thing to remember is, we, we have this pie that's the police budget. And really, PPU's, demand activity, even if you talk per capita and road miles, it really doesn't matter how you do it. You're just trying to carve that piece of pie up to get your fair share. And what demand activity is, is, you know, the guy might, the officer may be on patrol, and all of a sudden, there's a, a brake light out, and it turns into a drug caller, and that's all demand activity. He got out of the car, he went, he found there was drug activity, just like the guy might have been on patrol um, in front of the gun, gun place in Truesberry. He was called, there was a problem, he, he went, he found there was drugs, they found out that there were guns in the car, they were planning on robbing a place, that became demand activity. So, patrol time is still gonna be used by the chief to be put where he needs it. You know, if you, like, for instance, when we had arson, the chief might have more patrol time for, in our area, trying to find the, the person who was setting the fires. Something's going on in Glen Rock, he might put some more patrol time there. But once it becomes demand activity, it would be clocked against the municipality.
And before, we didn't have to worry about it, patrol time is patrol time, right?
We still don't worry about it.
It, yeah, it's still.
Patrol time is you're kinda gonna follow the demand activity.
Okay.
We're saying let the police chief run, do his job, and run his department as he sees fit. And he has a board over there, he knows how much, uh, how much patrol time has been spent in New Freedom. Say something like that, the arson happens, and they're over here a lot, well, maybe the next month, things are calmed down, he'll reassign over to Stewartstown. He'll take a portion the next month and put it in Glen Rock. We are all getting, as the president said, we're all getting our piece of the pie, and it's equal. It worked out fairly in the end, but we're not gonna tell him how he has to do his job.
So, it, now, right now, we get a, we get a police report every month that.
You'll still get it.
By municipality, that it outlines activities, how many of this, how many of that, and a whole list. Okay, so now, is it gonna be patrol time, and, and all the list of all these other, uh, of.
Now, you don't get patrol time now.
I know we don't.
In that, so you, I don't think you'll get a, a list of patrol time for your municipality.
So, if you want, but I'm, I, all I'm saying there is if somebody wants to know in a particular month, how much patrol time was there in New Freedom for August, or something?
Chief could probably tell you.
We don't, we don't know that, if somebody here were to ask that, we couldn't tell them. If somebody has a question, but, well, you know, worried about somebody, uh, uh, break-ins, or I thought there was something going on, how much patrol time was in New Freedom for August, for instance?
We, we wouldn't.
Be able to tell them.
No, at this point, no, the chief would be, would know that.
We can actually, I mean, it is tracked, they have codes for patrol time.
Well, I, I thought so, otherwise they.
We can add that to the report, I mean, shouldn't be a problem.
Mike, you're.
Say, we, we don't, we don't really have that in our monthly reports today. And really, what we're looking at for this demand activity calculation is different from PPU's today. That PPU's are based on the number of calls, and then it's converted to hours, let's just simplify it and say it that way. What we're looking to do with this demand activity is to use what your actual hours were for non-p patrol police activity in each municipality as a way of dividing up the cost. Today, the chief and the sergeants assign patrol based on that percentage of incidents that are being used as a basis for PPU's, to try to keep the numbers even and in line. What that means is, a municipality can receive more patrol maybe than it needs based on, because the chief has to fulfill the hours, as opposed to pushing some of that patrol into a municipality that might have increased demand activity to, like, current.
But, right now, we get, we get a report that it has a number for, for, you know, break-ins or traffic stops.
Correct.
Or whatever, it's not hours, it's a numeric.
Yeah, it's an incident, you're still, you're still.
The number of incidents, correct.
You would still, you would still get, uh.
Well, we don't, we don't necessarily know how many hours for, for one on each of those, or we don't know how many hours of patrol time.
Prove a point, thanks. You don't get an actual number of hours that incidents represent, that incident represents the number of calls. If one of those incidents, if there's an arson investigation, and it's a two-hundred hours, you know, you don't really see very clearly that that one incident is two-hundred hours over a period of four, five, six months. So, the idea, so, so that report that we get every month, I think that it can easily be converted to show what your demand activity hours are, because that's how we're tracking today, tracking the incidents, because that's what's being used in calculations. I think that report could, uh, more than likely be modified to actually include what the hours are.
You, you, you see that every month in this report.
Yeah.
Right, and it shows you how many total hours our municipality is used.
Right, now, that's second.
In addition, in addition to the, our district court, so that shows you how many incidents and what those incidents were. So, you, we do have two reports which will continue to show incidents, but they'll also can, show you the four-week time that we utilized from the police department. So, you'll, you'll see it, that, that could include patrol time, am I right, Mike? When you're looking at the, at the municipal total of hours.
It, it, it could, it could.
That includes your, your incidents.
I think it would be nice to see the patrol time broken up separately, so if a resident asks, well, okay, how much patrol time did, did the officer spend in New Freedom last month, 'cause it won't be the same, apparently, every month, it'll be as the chief determines it's needed, not as more.
And it's not the same every month today.
Right, but we don't, we don't necessarily know that, if somebody in the audience were to ask, okay, how much patrol time do we have in January, February, March, April, May, or something like that? We can't, we can't tell them, we don't know, we can, we can't go to this police report and, and, and tell them, and read off that and tell them. That's what I'm saying.
No, I agree, yeah. I'm not sure that is something that needs to be in the IGA, it, it, it's just a reporting. He could do that starting today, right? Next report, anyway.
We, yeah, we could, we could certainly ask that, we could.
So, that can be done.
I mean, it, it would, it would be nice to know, uh, whether somebody here, or, uh, somebody in our development asked me, okay, you know, uh, we had some kind of incident out there, how many, how much time did the police spend in New Freedom in, uh, last month? They could get down to asking per day, per week.
Well, there, there becomes a certain point too, where, uh, while the information might be available, it might not be a real accurate indicator or something, and, you know, you can't get as granular as how many, like, specific investigation-type information, so, you know, you have to, you have to balance that, but I mean, aggregate number of hours, I don't see that there'd be an issue with being able to provide ample patrol or demand activity.
I mean, once, uh, like Andy said, once he's out of the car, we've got, we've got demand activity now, we don't have patrol anymore. He may be on patrol and see something, and get out of the car to do that, okay, well, like, like the example he gave. But if he's not, if he's just doing a patrol, going through, uh, it, it would be nice to know, okay, how much time did he spend in New Freedom in a particular time period? And if somebody's tracking it, and keeping track, but there's, obviously, there's, has to be a way that, you know, we can know about it, uh, it's being counted.
Is that done automatically on the computer with the new system, with the Cody system?
All, 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 all Cody's, all Cody's being tracked, you know, coded based on what each officer's doing on their, uh, daily logs.
That's what I thought.
And then, you know, incident information.
And he's gonna decide how much patrol time per municipality at any, for, any given week or day, or?
Chief is.
Okay, chief and sergeant, so, but they, they honestly, wouldn't anticipate this being any kind of significant change in how that's assigned, because simply for the accountability factor, of, you know, if New Freedom's paying thirty-three percent uh, based on demand activity, well. uh, based on demand activity, well, you should be getting roughly thirty-three percent of patrol.
Patrol time.
Right.
How do we know that by looking at what we receive? We don't know that.
Right.
Everybody up here doesn't know that.
Right.
People up there don't. And the other thing, if we had one municipality that, that they used to have Harper with a amount of patrol time, they didn't want patrol time, they just wanted response, didn't that come up? Go back a few years?
I think that's in here.
Yeah.
We didn't quite get to that yet. We let, we let chief run his department. He knows, he knows how to run his department, that's why he's hired to do that, and, you know.
You know what I'm talking about?
Oh, I do.
Yeah, yeah.
Believe me, I do, we've had some other people that have, have said, I don't want, uh, I don't want this road, you know, patrolled because one of your officers caught me running a stop sign twice and they were on camera. It's happened, so I don't want you up here. No, that's, no, you, I don't care what you are, the police do their, do the job, they're hired to do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the cost factor that.
Oh, I agree, I know what you're saying, that it came up at the end of the year saying we used all our PPU's, we'll just go with the state police for a month. Now, it doesn't work that way, that's what we're texting.
Well, I'm just talking loud because we don't have microphones.
Okay. Paul, I'm sorry.
I was just going to add, there, there was discussion within the IGA committee about the including patrol as part of that division of hours versus the total for everyone. There is a value in, to each community for patrol, you know, and the ambulance can drive around town all day, it's not going to stop anyone from getting hurt.
Right, and we've had, we've talked about that before.
It's, it's just that.
Visibility.
Right, by going with demand activity, which is what we're doing today, just in a different way, by going with that, there is no ability to... I want to use, I'm going to say manipulate, there have been, historically, we, there have been different municipalities over the last twenty years who said, I, I don't want as much patrol because patrol actually used to be a factor in old formula.
Right.
Right, so by removing that as a mechanism or removing it as, uh, an opportunity for someone to say, well, it's subjective, by just really reaffirming that we're going on demand activity, if you call police, police have to respond to an incident, that's what you're, you're, uh, sharing the cost of the service.
So that, if, if, if you can identify that the cost for patrol, patrol time for all, let's say the four member municipalities right now, gets lumped into a certain amount, but everybody shares that cost essentially equally, because there's not enough patrol time for whatever is assigned to a particular municipality. New Freedom gets fifteen hours, Truesberry gets ten, Stewartstown gets twenty-five, you know, whatever.
According to what your piece of the pie is that you're paying for.
But it, but it, but it's not paid that way, it gives the chief the opportunity.
I, I think what, what you just said was the crux of the thing, the piece of the pie is being cut off based on demand activity, not based on patrol time.
Right, right.
And then patrol time falls in line, so basically patrol time chases the demand activity. That's probably the way it should be.
And couldn't anticipate it being any different than that, because today there's kind of a, a need to balance and make sure that the patrol helps balance out the numbers for PPU's, whereas this just really says the demand activity what drives a percentage. The, I'm sure the chief and sergeant, the sergeants will use those percentages to keep trying to assign patrol the same way they do today. And make sure that everybody's receiving it fairly to prevent disagreements, to prevent New Freedom from saying Truesberry's getting too much patrol, Glen Rock's getting too much patrol, Stewartstown's getting more patrol than we are. If nobody wants that, the idea with the intergovernmental agreement is that we're partners in this police organization. We're doing better having two officers on twenty-four seven in all of our communities than any one of us can provide ourselves. So it, it's just ensuring that we have that level of accountability and that we are sharing the costs fairly, which is what we're doing today, this is just a different way of measuring the same thing, I guess, you know, a way of putting it.
I mean, there may be more demand activity in a particular municipality. We had this discussion before too, without identifying municipalities, but certain municipalities seem to have more of a type of activity than other ones. And I guess they would also be getting more patrol time to do that, because they, their demand activity is up, so they would want more patrol.
It depends, I think it depends on what the incident is about.
Yeah, to a certain extent, I guess, yeah, if you're talking about.
You know, if there's an area where they're, they're, they're finding some drug dealing going on, yeah, they're going to patrol that a little bit more. If they arrest, you know, make an arrest, they're going to patrol it. If we have arson, like we did in New Freedom, they're going to patrol the, this area a lot more, and believe me, they did.
But again, patrol time follows the demand.
Demand activity.
Which is really the, it's the right way to do it.
And, and so if somebody, if we're residents were to call up, say, you know, we've seen, I think it happened here, incidents of speeding on a particular borough street, that's going to warrant more patrol time, or how, how does that?
Well, it'll, it'll get more patrol time, but what's going to happen is if there's speeders going through, the patrol is going to lead to an incident where the person gets stopped and then that's the demand activity.
Right.
That's why I say it kind of just chases each other, it's, it's.
But sometimes just having a, a, the police officer do more frequent patrols in a particular area where there's been speeding, people see it, won't even have to stop to write tickles, presumably, because people would say, well, you can spend more time there. But it was one street here in the borough, right? Near Development, I think it was, Ryan, wasn't it?
Was, was that speeding?
Yeah.
It's on a couple of different streets.
Yeah.
I know they put the, the trailer out and some, um, officers, I think, that said.
Oh, yeah, what street is that, um?
Logan.
Logan, yeah. That tends, tends to be, uh, the shortcut.
Okay, um, what?
Sorry, but, uh, just Article One, uh, bullet F, withdrawing member gets nothing in terms of assets when disbanded, so.
Only, only F.
Right, so at the point that they file the letter by August thirty-first, if that triggers a disbandment of the entire department, they're getting nothing when the, the department disbands.
Yeah, disbandment is if everybody, if the entire agreement terminates.
I, I think, I think if they're still within, within the police commission at the time, that everybody disbands, I think, you know, although I don't think it would be fair if either of the ones. Right.
So they're withdrawing as soon as they give that notice, which means if they withdraw and that triggers the disbandment of the department.
That's, that, I will, I'll provide that feedback to the solicitor, that might need that.
Well, I've been through it, that's why I pointed out.
If all four members are withdrawing, you have dissolution, actually, you know, you've terminated the agreement, in that case, that triggers the appraisal of assets and division.
Right.
So.
But if that withdrawing municipality triggers the others to, in essence, disband the entire department, are they getting a portion of that asset if they already?
I, it, it should not look like that.
I agree.
You mean, because, because disbanding is really if everyone's withdrawing, in that case, if everyone's withdrawing and you're disbanding, there are no withdrawing members, you're disbanded.
I mean, I, I read that, that, they get it, they get dispersed asmen, assets when disbanded.
Yeah.
Everybody does, I mean, that's the way I read the second half.
I think as long as they haven't left as yet, they would probably, like, if it triggers a domino effect, then, uh, the way I would read it is they would get the, uh, would be the demand activity allocation with the current budget here, which termination is effective. So I think they would get it, although it doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give that, I'll give that feedback to the solicitor first.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Article Two, Section D, uh, the mayor's preferred member appointee, but it's not required, I mean, obviously, the mayor, if we only had a community police department, the mayor would be the head of the department, so the mayor should be the head of the police department, um, and be on the police commission, so that's why, why that is in there. Section D allows for a vice secretary, vice treasurer, and that's basically just for, was for check signing, uh, type, type of, uh, things, so. That's just a, an administrative. Article Three, Section A, meetings are recorded with the Sunshine Act, that's by law. Article Four, now this is where we get into how we're actually going to calculate it, and, um, it's going to be a three-year rolling average calculated, and if we switched it, um, to the last full week of June, which basically allows the police commission to give us a budget input and time to put our budgets in place with very accurate information, with the exception of maybe the insurance, health insurance, because that always comes in late, so, uh, uh, and we already discussed demand activity. And then the chief is to provide new demand activity to the members no later than today, following the approval of the commission at its September meeting, which gives us more time for our budgeting.
Because that's, it really doesn't, though, I mean. Can we, we had that problem, when we get, we're working our, our budget, what, starting in September?
August, yeah.
Yeah, so before you get to, uh, December, November, we'd like to have our budgets done. I mean, so that, because they had to be advertised, right?
We, we don't, I don't think we really close it until November.
Well, they actually, we can run a, run in January.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but in theory, usually you try to authorize advertising in November, approve in December, that gives you a little bit of leeway in case something comes up, but, I mean, by their meeting in September, ours is going to be pretty much, I would say, final draft form before it goes to council, so.
But you're going to know.
We will just factor in a certain percentage and that's.
Yeah, I mean, every, every year, I mean, you know, like, like we discussed in the IGA, every year we come up, you know, we know last year was six hundred thousand, we're going to add ten percent to that or five percent to that for insurances and whatnot, and we're going to come up with a number that we put in there, we're going to, it's going to be padded a little bit, and then we pull it back and put it wherever it needs to go later, so I think, I think it's still going to work to our advantage to having the information by the September meeting.
Because this will be, and that, that information, we did change to, from, the three-year rolling average goes from July through the last full week in June, that's been changed so the chief has the, the ability to get those figures, put them together, and throw them into his, into the budget, which he's got to have done by, what was it, September?
By the September meeting.
By the September meeting.
For that.
That gives him enough time.
Well, over the years, some of the issues with budgeting is that, one of the biggest budget numbers that's a mystery for the police commission is the health insurance costs.
But we do, we have the same problem, Mike, and we do that, we handle it.
Agreed, so it's just, you, you don't even get a good estimate until then, so the idea is, you know, if you shoot the numbers high, then every municipality knows it is high, and then it's going to tweak down until the police commission finally approves a budget. So this is really just, what this provision states is it moves it up a little bit, because the current agreement says September thirtieth. Well, September thirtieth, there isn't even a, you know, the, the, the September meeting is three weeks before then. So this, this puts it to ensure that the commission provides that draft number by the September meeting, so that way you have it.
So we're going to get a, we're going to get a cap in the draft budget that the chief.
After the September meeting, and the commission would take up the draft, to take up a draft budget by the September, to provide.
Before our meeting, so we would have.
Even if it's not, we could always do a continuation meeting so that we can incorporate. This allows us, I think the important thing is, is that this is going to be kind of, it's going to be a, a lot firmer date, and it's going to be a date we're actually going to get good information, before it's kind of a triple, oh man, this, this is a good date and we'll have it, I don't know how you can back it up any further than that, it'd be nice if you could. It's all crystal ball stuff, anyway. Okay, Article Four, uh, Section B, there's no limit for one single incident. This kind of went back to the gentleman's agreement, actually came, I, I think it actually came out because of New Freedom and the, uh, the one incident we had that was five hundred plus hours, but there was a, kind of a gentleman's agreement, a, a, um, handshake thing saying that there's no, there's a, a limit of so many hours for a single incident. This takes that limit away, as it should. Now, it does allow for the other members of the municipal, other members of the, uh, police commission to say, yeah, we know you got hit pretty hard with that incident, why don't we spread it out over a little longer period of time? That could still happen, but there is no formal, you're only going to have this many hours for an incident.
Right, and it's not a change from the current agreement?
It's not, because that was never really in.
It was never in the agreement.
And it, it was, it was in an older agreement, and it, that, that removing that limit is essentially included in the current agreement, but it's not specifically stated, and since all of the existing members are on it, what this does is just simply memorialize it that, sort of, if someone twenty years from now says, hey, well, what about that five hundred hour limit, it's clear that that's wrong.
Yeah, the other thing, thing too, talking about, um, demand activity, demand act, you know, we used to have, an incident was X number of hours, forty-five hours was, was a, was an incident. This allows you to, well, we're in.
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes, I'm sorry. So I was, you know, if you have a police stop and that's an incident and it takes you ten minutes, it's only going to charge you ten minutes under demand activity, it's not going to automatically hit you with forty-five minutes. So, and the same thing, if it's a longer stop, then you'll get charged what you actually should be charged, so, in any, in either case, you'll be charged what it should be.
Then it's up to the officer, make him stop to, to, to record the time.
It's all.
And his computer.
They have computers in cars and that's.
Body cameras and, yeah. So Article Five, Section A, chief provides estimated budget by September, we've already really talked about that. And we know that the insurance, um, will be the best guess. Uh, section, you can stop me anytime if anyone has a question. Section Six, uh, Section A, the mayor and or appointed representative is the primary contact between the commission chief and member municipality, so that really stops like Neef from running in and then he has a question, Erica wants to go, well, Erica probably couldn't, she's a member of the police mission, and, you know, and Ryan, Brian, so you don't really want to have, you know, seven council members going to talk to the chief, so that would go through the mayor, uh, or Erica and his absence, so that's, that's how that's set up.
And we've already done a very good job with that, and I thank all of you that have come to me with a situation in the, in the borough that I give, take to the chief, so we don't have to do that.
Okay, Section B, the chief is responsible for doing the budget and preparing the demand activity, and that's really just formalizing what we've already discussed, that the demand activity is going to be prepared, just like he gave us PPU's and told us what our portion was. Article Seven, Section A, adds qualifying appraisers, and hopefully that, uh, that wouldn't ever hap, ever happen, but it do, it has, it allows for a, an appraiser or a court-appointed appraiser to be set up to divide up whatever's left if something happens, and you, you just always have to have, it's kind of like a prenup, so. Article Nine, Section B, the commission approval only required to contract with a non-member municipality. This allows the police commission to negotiate with somebody, like, let's say even somebody who wanted to leave, you could renegotiate with them, and if they locked into a fixed number of hours, if the police commission found it prudent, our members found it prudent to allow them to do that, then it gives them that ability to negotiate.
Yeah, that, that was a question I had, if one, back to this one municipality again, but if they decide to leave, but they want to purchase police coverage, police protection, I mean, so it's, it's not a, it's not guaranteed that, that that would happen?
No, it's a negotiation, and, and, and the IGA leaves that open, so that, you know, like you, for instance, uh, they have an exit fee that they have to pay.
Right.
You might say, well, if you commit to making, taking these many hours, we will use half of that exit fee to, you know, just making up an example, but it allows the police commission to, to try to keep. But it allows the Police Commission to, to try to keep things in order and, and for a long term.
But you would expect if somebody was leaving, rather than have them leave, if there's an opportunity to sell them police coverage, even though they're no longer members, that you would expect that that would be, something would be considered seriously.
Right.
Obviously, there's no way to put that into black and white necessarily.
No, that's why it just says they can negotiate it, and, you know, I mean, we have, we'll have our representatives. We have two representatives. They'll figure out what's best for the Police Commission to keep our tax burden down, and that's, you know, we're, we're relying on them, basically, to negotiate that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call the question. I'd like to call the question off at low.
Oh. Okay, we aren't up to the, basically. Does anyone have any additional questions?
I have, I have, I think I'm at Article four, section C, under unexpected, unexpended funds. In the middle of paragraphs, now, it's not something that's proposed as a, as a revision or a change, because it's not, it's not a red. But any cumulative funds in excess of 10% of the year's operating budget, you know, the Police can keep excess of that, use to pay unused sick leave, unused sick time, relief time, and then remaining excess funds will be to pick newly proposed and approved capital expenses. I guess there's been a little bit of a heartburn when newly proposed, if they had a budget that they did all your capital budget or something, you know what's coming. I don't know, we're, we're talk, we're gonna talk about that, because we have a, an outline by our, our borough manager to do that, and it just seems like a more sensible way to do that instead of waiting till, all right, we got excess money, you know, it'd be nice to be able to buy this, and it's not really planned for, it's not part of a capital planning effort that's, you know, maybe extends out five years or something like that. I mean, that's, that's what gives me heartburn, like, well, we got some money left, let's spend it on something, you know? Not necessarily, I mean, that's the way to do it.
It's, it, there's no proposed change to how it currently reads?
No, and that's the way it currently reads, but that's, I mean, I don't think it gives anybody else heartburn, but, you know? I, it, it does, because we're talking about taxpayers' money here, and if there's a rational plan going forward, capital improvement plan, or capital expense plan, or something like that, then we should stick to that. If there's something they absolutely have to have, like it's something happened, okay, fine. But it's not like, oh, yeah, we got, we got X number of dollars left at the end after we paid all these other expenses, now we've got, it's freedom for free to spend that on something.
Right, so, so, I can say, is it something that hasn't come before the IGA committee before? You know, if, if that's feedback to take back to the IGA committee? No one is asking to, you have this for the past four days, no one's asking you to pass it and find out what's in it later? Is more, is more information shared?
But in reading it, you know, I read that, and it's like, okay, so we're gonna, if there's more than 10% left at the Police Commission, they can keep the 10% overage for their budget, but then we're gonna pay sick leave or vacation time, and then we're gonna also, if we still have money left over, well, you know, it's almost like a temptation to spend it instead of credit back to municipalities where it came from.
There's a...
I don't know how often it's gonna happen, how often it's happened in the past, but...
And it's, there weren't any changes recommended by committee to the current language?
I understand.
If that's feedback to take back to the IGA committee?
How could you phrase that? Is that, you know, what happens to the budget excess, budget surplus?
Yeah, it's under the, yeah, it's a budget surplus, but I don't know that, and again, it's, it may be hard to put in black and white, but maybe I think of the federal government too much, but there's a temptation, if there's money left, it's like, well, you have to spend it before the end of the year, rather than credit, you know, if we aren't gonna get the money back, we're gonna get credit on the next quarterly payment for our, our police cost. I don't know, it just, it just bothers me that, okay, they had money left over, and, and it looks like it's gonna get spent anyways. If somebody has an idea how, how they need something else, but it wasn't part of a capital plan or part of an item in the budget or something that's already been accounted for, we're just gonna, you know...
Isn't there a limit as to what the overage can be that's placed in the general fund, Mike? 10%?
There's a 10%, 10% rating is.
Which really is, is almost a protection for each municipality in case something happens, that God forbid they wipe out a police car, and...
Well, hopefully the emergency would take care of it, or something like that. But I mean, yeah, the other, the 10% goes in, that's always been there, but then if there's anything over, that's available, over the 10%, whether they're gonna pay sick leave, and I guess it would, vacation leave time, but sick leave, if there's anything left after that, well, the, the language is newly proposed and approved capital.
I would have to go in front of the Commission.
We'd have to go in front of the Commission, you've got two representatives there, all municipalities do. And I can't think of anything specific that stands out as a substantial extra capital expense for anything that wasn't needed. And it's not like we're putting in air-conditioned seats in the vehicles, we're not, you know, gold plating of, of police cars.
You have a, you have a cell phone, or the first time you have to call.
Fine, that's fine. I mean, but I think, you know, we all do the same thing, and it's, you know, we're serving our local municipalities.
I know, yeah.
So, and I can't, I can't think of anything, and, but certainly if it's something that, to be considered, the IGA committee can do that.
Well, it's not up to me, it's, you know, it's up to the rest of council. I just, just trying to remove the temptation, if there's money, still money left over that could be credited back to the municipalities for the next quarterly payment, and maybe we oughta do that instead of worry about, you know, maybe we're, that's not the right language, but, you know, think, oh, yeah, we, yeah, we always wanted to have this, you know, let's go ahead and do it.
I know the last few years, if there have been overages, you know, healthcare rebates, that kind of thing, that's come back, so we've all seen it come back.
Right.
I've seen it on finance committee meetings for the Police Commission, and it's very due to us with the money, and I don't think that there's a huge...
I'm not, I'm not saying there is here, I'm just saying, the temptation in the future, you know? I, if the language wasn't there, I guess it wouldn't have...
I, I think all of this is saying is, I mean, if, if you're over the 10%, I mean, obviously, money should be used to offset unused sick or relief time. I think that's a union, right?
Correct, yeah, that could also, you could get a retirement.
Yeah, I don't think you could do anything about that. And then any remaining excess funds, that would have to be voted by the Police Commission in entirety. So, and we have our two reps on, I mean, I've not heard of any, any kind of abuse of any kind of...
At, at the April meeting, K-9 unit had received enough donations to purchase a new vehicle. They didn't have enough donations to cover outfitting that new vehicle. So, the Commission approved essentially advancing to the K-9 unit to cover...
Yep, I was here for that.
We're kind of, we're pretty much willing to, we all need to do it.
Yeah, you know, anticipating future donations, and then...
But that was a smart, that's just running, running the Police Commission, that's all.
Right, we, we could lose a vehicle tomorrow and have to replace it. You know, you have an engine that blow up, transmission go out, you know, you can be sitting with a 35, 40, 50,000 dollar capital expense that's, you know, unanticipated. If, all it's saying is that if there's a need, and this excess money is there, that it's an opportunity to use that for some type of capital expense.
If there is, you're watching, watch, then we'll, all right.
When it's not automatic, you can always vote it before the Commission, because that is not arbitrary.
Oh, yeah, it's not just arbitrary, here we go, we're gonna write down a check for this or that, because we need it.
Right, and New Freedom's the first of the four members to see this draft and take, and as a, as a council, take up the new draft. I'll be attending the bumping meetings for Glad Rock, Shrewsbury, and Stewartstown, well, Shrewsbury I'm there, anyway. And Stewartstown, so the idea is that your IGA committee representative, Derek Butcher, Andy is filled in a little bit, and then Erica is, has been to every one of them for the last two years. So, you know, there's, you know, you've got plenty of people that are, that are versed in, you know, what the, the IGA committee has been doing, what has been proposed. What we're hopeful, what we're hoping for, that all four members, you know, in order to make any changes to the current agreement, it has to be done unanimously. So, you know, we wanna float a draft agreement that all four municipalities can agree to.
And even though Buck has stepped down, Buck is leading meetings every month on the sidelines, getting the finance committee up to speed on what to do.
Yeah, don't remind me.
The only thing that I've seen that we've said anything about is breaking out patrol time, which we said that's a reporting issue. I don't really think it needs to be in the IGA. I think it's just we request that the Chiefs start providing a breakout of patrol time. One thing that I had asked a couple, three weeks ago is a, remember, we talked about the percent of the pie that we were responsible for? And I had asked, can you run a percent of the pie based on today's IGA versus the demand activity IGA that we're signing up to do, to see if the percent of the pie is approximately the same? We thought that it was, within a percent or two, but I haven't seen any data.
I'm working on it, working on scheduling with Sergeant Smuck to be able to do that. So, I did meet with him last weekend for a few hours. So, I do have it on, trying to work to actually get some of that along, maybe. He mentioned at Shrewsbury, at, at the last IGA meeting, that he's, you know, just started pulling some of that data the same way to be able to, to answer that, so... I, I would say that, you know, it should be coming, and anticipated that every member's gonna want the same information.
I would think, I mean, it's just a good sanity check to see, you know, what, does this do anything to us? And what was interesting is Sergeant Smuck pointed out that our percents have been within one or two percents. You know, the whole time.
Yeah, no, no one's expecting it to vary significantly from the percentages we're paying today.
Okay.
We do wanna vote on, or table it, or come back with the, with these changes?
I don't think we can go to on, if there's information requested.
Well, yeah, let me remind you that the motion on the table is to draft an ordinance, which is the first step. I don't think that there's anything wrong with proceeding and drafting the ordinance, because the ordinance will have to come back to us at the next meeting for approval, right?
If you're authorizing drafting the ordinance and advertising the ordinance with the agreement, then yes, we'll have to come back in June. If you're only authorizing the ordinance, then you're gonna have to come back in June and authorize advertisement with the agreement.
What if there, if there's a minor change, though, then we have to...
Well, right now, we're asking for what, a minor change you're looking to, and what if another municipality comes back and wants to change?
What was the first sentence you said?
I said, what if we wanna come up with a minor change after, you know, we've talked about a couple of things, and we're talking about drafting an ordinance to accept this?
We, we've not disagreed with anything yet. The only thing that we've said is...
I thought we looked at some different wordage.
No, the only, yeah, the only, well, I mean...
Article 1F.
Yeah, Mike said he was gonna take Article 1F back to see about withdrawing number, getting that, just for clarification.
Do, do, do we want that clarification, though, before we vote to go ahead and draft an ordinance?
Well, the ordinance is referencing the agreement, so the ordinance won't have anything. The ordinance is, is the adopted piece, whereas the agreement is gonna have the language. So, that could change if you just draft it.
Okay, that was kind of my question.
It's probably, most is gonna be two pages, the ordinance, or so.
You know, would it, would it make a difference to anybody if it was, if it was changed, to clarify differently? I don't know if it makes any difference.
Not if it's just the clarification. I, in fact, I don't, I don't see it affecting me either way, no matter which way you go, yeah. I think, I think, I mean, my own personal opinion, I think it showed, by, by calling for an ordinance and advertising the ordinance, I think it shows that New Freedom is supporting the IGA committee and supporting the IGA.
I call and draft the ordinance and advertise it for the third amended revision of the IGA?
That's, that's the motion involved, it's actually already on the table, that's why, yeah, we had to have it on the table to discuss it. You're calling the question, is...
All I'm doing is calling the question, took the vote of when we started.
Well, no, 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 we already have a motion to draft the ordinance. Yeah, that's, that's what we've been discussing the whole time. We're, we're okay. Okay, so, not to advertise, just to draft. I, there's nothing wrong with advertise, drafting and advertising. I don't see any major changes that we wanna make, other than a clarification.
But what if Glad Rock or Shrewsbury does, and then it comes back to us, and it's completely changed?
Well, but you would still have an ordinance to accept version three, which, which is not the latest version.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
And then, then we just move forward.
I think with it being 20 pages, the cost to advertise is gonna be substantial.
Yeah, you don't wanna advertise it to...
But you're not, but you're not advertising the whole ordinance, you're just advertising the cover, right? Right, so it's not gonna cause the same...
But, yeah, that's not the ordinance, that's the agreement.
Right, right, that's, yeah, yeah, we're not publishing this. We're publishing the ordinance to adopt version three, which you are going to have everyone's, and it's gonna come back to us at the next meeting, and hopefully you'll have it at the next meeting. If not, we'll have to table it.
Right, yeah, we're, we're expecting for the next, based on the timing of all of the members' meetings, the next Police Commission meeting, Stewartstown will not have met to do what you're doing tonight. So, we would anticipate that the June meeting of the Police Commission would be continued to the second, I'm sorry, the third Tuesday of June. And at that point, we would have the feedback to be able to discuss from all four municipalities.
Should we wait that? All right, then we'll...
That's what I was trying to, yeah, that makes sense.
If, if we have to wait for Stewartstown, then we can, this week, we do it.
So, when you go to the next three meetings, can you report how each person is, what, what, how each municipality's already voted?
I will.
So, Stewartstown doesn't meet till the first Monday, next month?
Right, Stewartstown meets on the 6th of June. Police Commission, June starts on a Wednesday, so Stewartstown meets the Monday after.
So, we're on, it's fine. Well, but you have a motion, except I have discussion, so then there needs to be...
We can make a motion to table, or...
Well, just, we wanna just call the table, question.
Yeah. So, then we're going to call the table, this...
No, no, I'm gonna take it.
Michigan State, or you want?
Or do you wanna just amendment, amend, amend the wording? Do we wanna amend the wording to say what Erica just said, or?
You can ask her to.
Yes, she could amend her motion to simply say, begin to draft an ordinance.
We're not gonna advertise, we're not gonna have this.
I amend my motion to draft the ordinance.
I'll second it.
So, we have, did you second it before?
No.
Well, he has, did he have to second it?
No, he could do it.
Oh, indeed.
Okay, so we have an amendment, or a motion to, to draft the ordinance and not advertise the ordinance. So, we're all agreed to draft it. Any other discussion? Okay.
No.
No, we're fine, I just wanted to...
Okay, yeah, that's probably a good idea, although, Bob's here, it probably makes sense. Okay, yeah, we'll do that. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, that takes care of that. We are going, we have a lot of people here from Dickinson Court, so again, we're going, if no one objects, we're going to move, move the, review of the traffic study results from Dickinson Court up to now. Okay? All right. Do you wanna present that?
Well, basically, at the last meeting, there was a discussion that was tabled from... Well, basically at the last meeting, there was a discussion that was tabled from, I believe, at this point, the January or February meeting with results from the traffic study. That traffic study indicated the best alternative would be to install no parking basically on one side of the street on Dickinson Court, whether that's odd or even sized, we'll head it that way. There was no recommendation on which side to pick, it was left up to municipality. That started the conversation to council looking at other options, and ultimately it became that we wanted the input from the residents at Dickinson Court. So we did send out letters about two weeks ago to all the residents, inviting them to the meeting tonight to discuss this. Obviously, there was concerns from the, concerns from the fire company, concerns from pet waste, from our.
School bus.
School bus. There was an incident as well as our public works stand plowing in, during the winter months. So that's what started the chain of events. So really, at this point, council has, if you want to talk about the situation, but a couple of options that presented, if you want to hear from the residents, however you'd like to report with. Basically, just an open forum discussion to talk about the situation.
I mean, one of the things we talked about, station widening, I don't know that, without doing some more work, because you, well, the people here obviously know that one side, the grade is like this, and the other side, it's the other way. But you've got, there's a hydrant there, there's a light pole, there might be a couple of trees, right? On the one side where you, you know, that I'm looking at. But then when you do that, you change the grade, and so now you're going to have a changing grade, if you're going to widen the street, because you just can't go unless you put in a retaining wall. But that's, that's something the engineer would have to look at and see what can be done if anything is as far as grading, wanting to widen the street at all.
And right now, the cart path is 25 feet, the right way is 50 feet. Just for reference.
Twenty five, fifty?
The route's 20 feet wide. Cart path's 25.
So you've got 12 and a half feet on either side that you can go. It could be the other 25.
Right. But if we restrict parking to one side or the other, that alleviates the need to have to go through widening the street, taking people's property and moving all the.
If you restrict parking on one side, everybody parks on the other side, people on, there's mailboxes on both sides of your street, so.
So you put them all on the, on the other side of the street, just like the rest of the town, there's two, you know, side, there's over here.
That's what it is, that's our goal, but so if somebody has to move one option, then I guess just move mailboxes to one side and allow parking only on the other side.
That, that's the way I, when I drove around town, some other places like up on Washington, I think that's one. There is another one where you only have, go to, I think Front Street, they're all on the one side of the road.
Our, our street, they're all on the one side.
All on the one side. So that would just be a matter of they have to put their mailboxes all on the inside, which is not a big.
Can we get some comments from the people on Dickinson?
Dickinson, yeah.
Now's your chance.
I have a question.
Yeah?
Why is our court narrower than the other courts? I measured, why is our court narrower? Why is the paved portion of our court narrower than the other?
The street itself.
Yes, the street itself.
That would have, I would go back to when those houses were built and that road was laid out.
From my research, it didn't meet, it didn't meet what the code would have been at that time.
Well, at what time, what?
No, seventy, seventy-eight, seventy-nine?
You see, that, that's something that's, that would be in the suburbs, you know, it's the Borough Council can wave, it's not a zoning ordinance issue where they have to have a zoning hearing.
Yeah, there could have been, we could have planned for that.
Right.
With some circumstances.
Has anyone measured your, the width of your street?
I, I did. We were at a, we were at a dual-sport bike dance, I don't have the paperwork with me, but at home, I, I could get it back to you.
Okay, I just wanted to.
But it is, it is the street right one behind us, whatever street that is, it is like three feet narrower.
Yeah, see, I think, I think that street is about 20 feet wide, and our records show it's 25. I don't think it is.
No. No. I know it's not 25 feet.
I measured it.
So if you've got 20 feet, then you've got 15 feet outside, and I do decide that you have right wing borders, so you can do it.
I didn't measure it the whole way. I looked at two spots.
If it was paved, the whole width, would it, would it fix the issue?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Three feet would fix the issue.
Does this move down to just the rest of the front?
It's other than the traffic side. It's not that it's too narrow.
Yeah, when garbage trucks can't get through and.
But if it was just a.
It could be, but that could get a collision.
Right now, right now, that's, it would be a good.
But that's what's right here.
That specific spot, when there's two vehicles, I mean, it really doesn't matter where it's at on the road, but yeah, the, where the incident was with the bus driver.
The traffic study says that the roadway allows adequate space for parking on one side. I'm sorry, I interrupted someone.
That's all right, when you finish.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the traffic study says that the, it allows adequate room for vehicles to park on one side and still allow two vehicles to pass simultaneously.
No way.
You have a way.
No way.
And that's what the traffic study suggested.
Yeah.
Sorry?
There's no way that two vehicles would, would be able to pass with one car still parked on the side of the road.
No.
Yeah. And that, that I think is, I think that would create a bigger problem. If you have cars lining that whole side, what are you going to do then? You're going to back up to the, to the main road to let that person pass to then?
Instead of, what you're saying is, if they're staggered, you can still, you can weave it through.
Yeah, if, if you parked, if everyone was forced to park on one side of the road, there's no way that people would be able to, you would have to, it'd be like driving on a driveway. You'd have to back up the driveway, let that person by, and drive through there.
I'm not resident, but aren't there driveways? Yes, there are. I don't understand the problem.
Does every house have it? Pretty much every house has a driveway, correct?
I'm sorry, this lady was.
I have difficulties getting out, well, I don't have difficulties, I can get out of my drive, I can get out of my driveway, but there is a very large white van with expired emissions, plate, emission stickers on it, that hasn't moved since about October last year. And when you're coming from the closed end of Dickinson Court towards the main street, there's a slight bend in the road, and that is the vehicle that was hit by the school bus, that necessitated the school bus route being moved. And my granddaughter now has to change, has her route changed because the mirror was hit.
Is that the van you said?
It's a, it's a great big white.
Box van.
White panel van, box van.
It's my van.
With expired, with expired tickets on the windscreen, and it hasn't moved since Octo, at least October last year.
What's expired, it has, it has certainly moved since then. What's expired on them?
Your emission stickers.
It doesn't have emissions.
Yeah, it does, and I have a picture.
Mammoth doesn't have emissions, it's a 2001, it's a diesel, it's emissions exempt.
Okay, well, those stickers on your.
Your stickers are expired.
You probably have a weight class sticker then.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not, you have a regular inspection.
Yes.
And then you have a weight class sticker.
They are expired.
By a year, like.
I'm just, I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not doubting you, I'm just saying that it's a weight class sticker. That looks like the. It just says the windshield sticker, doesn't say any emissions.
I know, I'm just saying, well, the windshield sticker.
I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to rush you along, but I mean, that really is a place issue. We can't really do anything about it on the Borough Council.
I understand.
We can address the parking part, but.
It hasn't moved. It doesn't move. I have, I have a rain camera, it doesn't move.
It, it has moved.
It has not moved.
I drive it.
You didn't drive it today?
Lady.
Can some of these people that are parking on the road widen their driveways so they get their vehicles in their driveways? Because we have one section on Dickinson Court where there's cars parked across from one another, and you've got to weave up through there. So I understand why the trash people are having problems, probably the mailboxes have a problem, probably anybody that has to come down there to do business.
Emergency vehicle.
Why, why?
Why couldn't they just widen their driveways?
Between the truck and that other truck, you can't get an emergency vehicle through there.
I'm sorry?
Between the box truck and the other pickup and parks on the other side of him, I don't know how you can get an emergency vehicle down through there.
You can't, that's the problem.
You can't.
You can't get a trash truck.
I can draw a truck down through there.
You can't get any emergency vehicle, you couldn't get a fire truck, and complaints from the fire department.
Correct.
I think what we're, what we're trying to say is, I mean, obviously, if, if the, if the people who own the houses can figure out a way to make it work, that's fine. We're all in favor of that. We'd rather stay out of your business. But if you can't figure out a way to do it, I think what we're going to have to do is make, make a motion to either widen the street or put parking on one side and the mailboxes on the other.
No parking?
No parking on the one side.
No parking on the one side? Because it's, right now, he says that even if you have the one car there, or just saying that you'd have to back up.
They can't pass.
There's no way two cars, if you have cars parked on one side of the road, there's no way two cars can pass through there.
What they do, in theory, if you have a car on each side parked.
There's no cars on each side parked. They're staggered. They are staggered.
Oh, no, I've been there, you've had a big box truck here and a truck here, and you can't get any air truck and.
Your van and your truck.
I'm literally parked in front of the driveway. There's a vehicle parked in front of the driveway.
So then you do a vehicle there, so you can't get three vehicles through the lane.
What are you, what are you trying to?
I'm trying to drive.
You're saying if you can get three vehicles down that road, it's.
They can't.
People don't want to have visitors.
There's not, the truck and air truck are not.
You've got your CRV and the pickup, it's two, and then.
Into the box truck, they're.
You realize that, and the truck. All right. We wanted your input to see what we wanted to do. I think, I think, I mean, we had one person say to just not have parking on the street, but I don't think that that's a tenable situation. So, and I think you can get by if you have parking on one side. I mean, I got through where, even where you had your box truck and the pickup truck parked, I could get through. So, I mean, I could see where a trash truck couldn't get through, or a fire truck could not get through.
But you're saying, you're saying that they were parked after a single, a single lane you could get through.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, some of, if I was coming down, kind of like when I drive down Constitution.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, you know, if someone's coming at me, I have to pull over to the side and we wave and they go on their merry way, you know? That's actually 30 feet. Yeah. Go ahead.
So what is the, I guess, the law as far as how far off the road you park? Because I mean, I guess if, if we make sure everyone's parking tight to the curb initially, I mean, I think that's part of the issue.
So that's a permeable issue.
But do we know what, do we know what the?
Twelve.
I was gonna say, it's been a while since I've taken the test, but I think it's 12 inches.
PA is 12 inches from the curb. We asked.
And to clarify, the truck that everyone keeps, the box truck, it's not parked opposed to a truck. It's parked in front of their driveway because when I had it parked, I was going to extend my driveway four years ago, there was complaints from our community about me extending my driveway. So the borough told me to park it on the, on the street instead of in my grass. So that's when it got parked on the street. I park it in front of their driveway because it's the only place that they are not parking exactly across from them. That's the only way I can make it somewhat easier to get through there. So there's never a car parked across from that, that truck, which was said that they're parked across from each other. I'm, am I across from your driveway? I'm exactly in front of their driveway because of that reason. If I would back up 20 feet, I would be directly next across from their truck. Is that correct?
Yes, but you also park a car behind your box truck if you go, there's a CRV.
If it's parked there, it's in the, it's half in the grass.
But it's behind there and it's double parked.
Yeah, I'll leave it to the other side.
The reason we're not parked on the other side is because you guys would call the police because we were too close to a fire hydrant. There's a spray paint mark and you guys kept calling the police about it.
We have a.
Hold on, hold on, I have a question.
But you're also not allowed to park next to a fire hydrant.
We weren't next to a fire hydrant, we were 15 feet away from it.
I have a question to understand the background, so you've been to previous council.
Yes.
What was the reasoning for not keeping it off of the street in, in your yard?
In the driveway?
I was going to extend, you have to have it permitted.
Correct. So, so, all right, so you didn't have.
I was going to extend my driveway.
Okay, so you were going to exceed the permeable surface?
There was complaints from neighbors that, I don't know who they were, but I was extending my driveway and taking away from the curb, and there's apparently in the ordinance is you can only extend driveway depending on the size of your garage, how wide?
Yeah, there until you get to the, once you're at the street, and then you can widen it once you're off the spot.
So you have to come so many feet back, and then you can widen it, say like.
My driveway's not long enough. That's, you got, the, the last borough I talked to, Wade talked to me, said, you have, there's multiple driveways on our court that have been extended that are extended paths. I was not allowed to because people complained. So people complained, and here we are.
Did, did you request a variance? Let me ask that.
Yeah, that was, that was my next question.
I don't, I don't know about that. I don't know how to, I don't know, I can't.
I mean, people, people could complain, but I mean, if you request a variance.
I was told by Wade I couldn't extend the driveway. Wade then told me this is where you, what you do. That's, it's, it's public parking, park it there.
You mean by can make it wider?
Yes.
Or not?
Wade told me to park on the street.
But the extension you're talking about.
I wanted to do an extension of my driveway.
Make a wide expansion.
To expand it wide.
Yes, and I was told I was not allowed to do it.
Do it have to be up to your house?
We would be really happy with that.
Can that be, can that be requested?
You have room beside your house to put in an extended driveway back?
What's that?
Do you have room, if this is your house, do you have room along the side of your house to put in a driveway or?
Yeah.
I mean, I have a fence there, you have the fence for that to come down.
Well, then, then you're going into your.
Then is the fence, is the fence right on the property line?
Yeah, it goes to the property line, but it goes from the backside of the garage to the property line and then cuts back along the property.
So how far would he have to be from the property line now with the driveway?
It can be, if he's outside the right way, he'd be right up to it.
Well, how much flexibility in the right way is there?
So that's an ordinance, that's the legal document.
Maybe, Ryan, I mean.
I'm just saying, like, can that be part of that variance? Can that portion of the right way be waived?
No. No, you wouldn't be, the variance would be for the zoning ordinance, not for the right way.
Okay.
Can we ask, how much effort is it going to take for our engineer to take a look at and see, how much, how much could you, could the street be widened without, without incurring a problem for the people that live on the, on the side that I guess would be to the east where the grade comes up a way through the road? Because, you know, you're going to get back so far, and you're going to, you're going to have a hard time getting back to grid without putting in a retaining wall.[1726.33]
If, and you can also measure and say, okay, maybe, you know, all you need is five feet out there. We can probably get five feet without you probably having to move the one hydrant. Maybe a, there's a light pole or something at one point that may have to be moved.
I think widening the, there's only really two solutions that I can say, and that would be either widening the road and making one side only parking.
So, I mean, so if you did, no parking on one side, you have to, we go through the motions and we'd have to post signs and everything. That's relatively inexpensive.
It is.
And let's just, let's, let's just talk that that works and everybody's happy, then we're good.
We can't hear you.
I'm, I'm sorry. So if, if we were to restrict it from one side, a couple of signs that would be posted at whatever interval is required would be relatively inexpensive. And if that works, then great. And if it doesn't, then we can explore, you know, the, the widening as an option. So that's probably my two cents.
How, how do you pick what side? And then what happens at the end of the road where it's the court? Where it's a circle?
Well, I guess the engineers would look at that.
I don't, I think there's a problem on the court per se. I think it's just on the road. And I think you would pick the side by, you have a road that runs into Dickinson. Can't remember the name now.
Wilson.
Okay, Wilson, with that road that runs in, you need left, right visibility to make a turn. So it would be the side crossed that would be for parking and the side that Wilson runs into would be no parking.
So it'd be the even side as opposed to the outside.
Yeah, essentially the west side of Dickinson is the one that would, at least in my mind, be ideal for having parking on. The other side where Wilson comes down because of the right away, it would make, to me, it would make more sense to have that than no parking side.
How, also how would this be enforced?
With no parking signs and then it becomes a police issue if they're violating it.
Then the mailboxes would get moved to one, to the opposite side definitely, because everybody parks on one side.
You have to, if everybody's on the one side, then you, you have to.
Well, the mailboxes could be on either side.
No, not if everybody's parking on the one side. It's too much of an issue.
Go ahead.
So if you put the parking all on one side, that means these vehicles will be parked in front of other people's properties, right?
That's true, definitely.
That's, that's why I'm saying it's, as an option, a couple of signs to see if it works is cheaper than redoing the entire street.
I still think widening their own driveways would be the way to go.
I, I don't disagree.
Why can't that happen? Why can't that happen?
Because of the setback on the road, the right away.
But I, I mean, you know, go ahead.
So how does that play into the fact that, you know, I'll use Jeff's example, you guys have two kids. They have a birthday party. They have ten cars there for a birthday party. It doesn't matter though. That, that becomes a neighbor, a nagging neighbor can then call when somebody having a birthday party on Saturday and all of a sudden you have to move all these cars and cause, cause havoc.
What, why would you, I don't understand. Why would you call the police to make them move their cars?
I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if it's in force.
His public parking, anybody can park there first come, first served.
If you, not if it's single side parking.
You're parking if you're parked, their birthday.
If you have a birthday party, there's not, the court's not that long.
Right.
So people come over for a birthday party or whatever and there's no parking. They park on that side of the road.
The side that's posted for no parking.
Yes, or they now getting ticketed. There's nowhere for them to park.
Yes.
Sure. There, there's actually a third option. Why don't you put in a, put in for a variance and see what happens?
There's multiple part, like, it's not just me parking on the road. Like, there's, they have multiple vehicles out there. They have vehicles out there. We have other neighbors that have vehicles out there. Like, it's more than just one vehicle.
So there's nobody parked, parked across from their vehicles. The problem is where these homes are are parked across from one another. So the.
We're not parked across.
A getting through there, you gotta weave through there. Over where Tim and Tony live, there's just their cars. There's nobody across from them.
But what if they're, what if someone moves across from them and starts parking across from them?
Well, then we'll have to be right here again.
I mean.
What was the traffic, I didn't, I was totally unaware there were given a traffic study. What was that, the opinion tale?
I went out, I measured.
Yeah. The traffic study was completed by TRG, TRG Traffic Resource Group. They're out of York. Anytime that municipality wants to look at changing, whether it's parking regulations, speed limits, traffic calming measures, you have to have a traffic study done in order to implement those and make them official after the council would pass an ordinance to do so. So the traffic study was basically, okay, you know we have an issue. Is this roadway wide enough for parking on both sides with, with travel? And it came back that obviously, no, it's not. At minimum, one side should be no parking in order to properly maintain passing vehicles. According to Penn dot publication two twelve. Yeah. Just, it really was up to, it was left to municipality to decide which side would get posted. Does that help?
It, it does. I was just unaware of that. And for the record, I'm opposed to posting half the street just for the entertainment purpose, Fourth of July, winter holidays. I'm not gonna name them all because people should still be entitled to entertainment.
I would entertain a motion to have the engineer do a. I'm sorry.
So now, you know, you have the two cars parked, just say they're across from each other, okay? And then you get one car between, so that's kind of the logic for saying we, that cars can pass each other if you have parking on one side. But there was an incident with the two cars parked across from each other. If you got cars meeting going down the street, you're still, I mean, it's still a potential for incidents.
I think school buses.
I think it's a safety issue.
Yeah, school buses, trash trucks, fire engines. I hope that's not easy to get through.
So if all the cars are parked on the one side, where are the people on the even side put their trash and recycling with all the cars parked there?
Well, I mean, on Constitution and on Washington, I think they still put it in front of their house. They, and they just have to go around the, whatever's parked.
And on Front Street is on, in front of their house too.
Same thing, yeah, we got the same, same issue.
But there may not be room in front of their house if the cars are filling it up. And, and they will miss it because as it is now, if it's not away from a parked car, it's easy for them to miss because they only go the one direction on the recycling.
Have you neighbors talked about each other to kind of solve this?
Yes.
Who said yours? I understand the vehicle, but I think the larger vehicles, you know, trash trucks and I, how difficult that could be. Because I drove it to go see and the, like a Dodge truck and the white box truck were like almost right across from each other. It was hard for my small car to get through.
I have a big vehicle. Every time I go to work, it's pitch dark. I have to literally stop, put my headlights on to make sure that I don't nail somebody's car going through.
Do you have a recommendation on how to fix this?
We just noticed here not too long ago, this has been on valley.
I'm asking for ideas, you know?
Could we have the engineer go out and take a look at it and see if he can get, without really causing a problem with people's driveways? Cause if you widen the street on one side, you know, your driveway's gonna come back. Instead of maybe having a slope like this, it might be like a little steeper. But at least have him take a look and see if that's an option.
Okay. Um, sorry, I said, we did put the ordinance establishing residential parking permits. We have put on the signs along South Ron Street and we're hoping that that'll alleviate that. We'll see.
Is that directed?
When did they go up?
To the March Goodfellow Park, right.
Over to the park.
Right, yeah. We already reviewed in excruciating detail the Dickinson Court traffic study.
As far as A, can we read that in the agenda now?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we might.
I mean, we're, yeah, we already passed.
The engineer.
You're talking about A under new business?
I'm sorry, A under.
I'm finished with this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that could come off and if, if it comes back up again, we'll bring it back up again. But I think we, we let it and see what kind of complaints we get through this next spring and summer season and, and we'll, we'll go from there. Right? It's unreasonable. Yeah, just take it off. Okay, March Goodfellow Park approved. I heard him, I heard him a little. We had tabled, yes. Oh, we need to table it again. Yeah, um, alright.
We're even halfway down the page. End of the first page.
Okay, ratify application for payment one in the amount of one seventy-three. And this is our construction for the renovation project across the street.
Yeah, and I know, I know there were some questions on, on why this was handled this way. And I, I do understand that there was just a discrepancy between obviously how we can pay bills and the contract that was drafted by warehouse. We have since corrected that with them. But basically the contractor submitted a request for payment, payment request number one. It was reviewed by warehouse, it was approved. The contract contained language that payment was due within so many days. That was outside of the upcoming council meeting. Obviously, we don't wanna void our portion of, or.
We don't wanna violate.
Violate our contract with the contractor. And so we made that payment, but we basically said, look, from now on, here's where the schedule's going forward and we'll need payments. So it was just a little bit of hiccup at the beginning there and discrepancies, so. Is that just with this applicant or?
We already paid it. We approved it.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying like moving forward with, with other contractors or other situations.
Warehouses now familiar with what we.
Okay, so it was just level setting with that? Our new did specs will maintain that language. Gotcha.
I see five change orders.
Those were change orders that we needed as part of the demolition. One of those would have been, my paper's out of whack now. Oh, you're, you're talking total? Or you're looking at payout two? Yeah, you're looking at two. Right, we're still on one, sorry.
Twenty-four thousand dollars on one.
Yeah, so actually these were, option one was part of the contract originally. And that had to do with the material and then we got the credit of the eighteen thousand.
So nine hundred dollars for material?
Nine hundred dollars was, um, the, I can tell you, I'm not sure about the nine hundred dollars. I'd have to pull that one again. The nine thousand, there was an issue with the level of the concrete. When they pulled all the walls down, the concrete between two doors was offset a little bit. That required that area to be basically fully demolished and new concrete poured so we could maintain eighty-eight compliance through. And again, that was something on the fly that can't really.
Which change order is that?
That's, I believe that's the nine thousand eighty-four.
And what's the thirty-two thousand dollar change order?
Oh, the nine hundred was the, I'm sorry, the nine hundred was a different adhesive for the floor. So that was the nine hundred dollars. The thirty-two relates back to the original contract, I believe. And that was for option one, which was the roofing material that we weren't sure if we were able to get. So that added it and then we, because we're able to get it, that's why you have the credit of the eighteen thousand eleven back.
So the difference is the.
So they were able to get cheaper things at? Uh, the, the roofing material. Roofing material.
Okay, so that thirty-two thousand relates to the roof.
It's roofing material, yeah.
And then you got eighteen thousand.
How much more do they have to go of the property? Uh, it's drywall, so basically interior finishes at this point.
One five percent, I think?
Yeah.
Okay, should've done this before, but I will entertain a motion to ratify the payment number one in the amount of one seventy-three oh seventy-two seventy.
From second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pouse. Application number two, the amount of two forty-two, three fifty-eight.
Back to change orders.
Yep, yep. So that was for, uh, the way the, the electrical panel was installed would not meet current code, current regulations. So they had to rework that panel and then the sub-panel in for the.
That's existing panel that was.
Existing panel. Yeah, there were a lot of double, double tap breakers and things that can't do that anymore. That wasn't called in any original inspection for the.
Tell him this.
Yeah, uh, basically what we were told is that they don't open panels up, they look at breakers, but they don't actually take the, because of insurance.
So when they took the panel.
When they took the panel because of insurance issues.
That's what I was just saying.
How did no one see that?
Every, everybody has that. I mean, that's like, yeah, I mean, all these old houses around here, you don't find anything that's not out of code.
Right. I believe what's in, okay.
No, you can.
Alright, make a motion for the approval of the two hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
And a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pouse.
Aye. No, not opposed, I'm. Late.
Just late.
Give him fifteen minutes to go right out.
Capital reserve fund proposal. I wanna actually, just real briefly, I wanna commend Andrew on this. This is like a no-brainer, but obviously no one has ever thought about it before. But yeah, actually having a capital fund for replacement of vehicles is, is a really good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. And it was, it was a good bit of work, collaboration with, with the employees as well. Making sure that obviously we have the proper pricing, we're looking at pieces of equipment. Whether or not, you know, just because it says that it needs to be replaced in fifteen years, doesn't mean that the borough feels the need to replace that unless absolutely necessary. If it's a truck that you're finding snow, that you're using every day, that's different than something that sits and you use it a couple times a month. Not as often. So that is factored into how we looked at this and, and how we scheduled everything. So basically, I won't go through and, and read everything, but we went out fifteen years. If you, if you look at the replacement, it's a little over two million dollars and there's thirty-four different assets. Those assets are only ones that are over ten thousand dollars. That's what we looked at as causing an impact to the budget and the replacement year. So what we did is got the departments together. We looked at the listing of our equipment. Referenced that with our insurance to make sure obviously everything's covered. So the first page is the proposal. The second page is a listing of all the equipment, its year of purchase, the item, what departments utilize that piece of equipment. The useful life was taken from the useful life table, which is put out by United States Office of Management and Budget. So tried to find something that was actually legitimate to look at, at useful life tables and, and that's what we went on. Next column is what we anticipate, the borough anticipates, keeping that piece of equipment for, and as you can see in, in the majority, if not all the cases, we try to keep that piece of equipment longer than what the United States government is basically saying the useful life for that piece of equipment is. And then the replacement year is basically factored into the year purchased plus are the boroughs useful life. So you can see the ones in red are past, ones in yellow are still, are upcoming and green is their, their product. And then the replacement cost, which is actually off of actual estimates received from the vendors, manufacturers.
That's great.
With a little.
The sewer plant vehicles and whatnot, are those under proportionate share?
They are. Yeah, that's a good question. We go, yeah, we go to the next page. You can see, if we jump down, expand the page up, if you jump down to the bottom for budget allocation, you can see that twenty-three, since that would be a full funding year, we're looking at general fund, water fund, sewer fund, and then sewer fund proportionate share. And that proportionate share looks at the equipment that we use at the treatment plant based on the percentage that it's used for the treatment plant as compared to the freedoms collection system and then factoring that into the percentage. And then factoring that into the percentage of that municipality's proportionate share allocation. So it really breaks those numbers down. So for instance, that, that twenty-two thousand proportionate share is broken up of about thirteen thousand, five hundred from Shrewsbury, five hundred from Railroad, and eight thousand from New Freedom.
This is a hard question. When we take on Hopewell and Shrewsbury Township, are we gonna have to have some kind of buy-in to cover assets? Whenever they buy the additional E D U's?
That would be up to, I, I, I think we're all aware of that, and almost every single municipality in that agreement, and the new ones coming in want to see a complete new agreement. And I think that's great news that we need to start fresh, new agreement, at that time, that agreement would have that language in it if everyone agrees.
Is that copy, that information's not in our packet, could I get a copy of it? Cause I'm kind of blown away that we would spend two million dollars in fifteen years just on equipment. I mean, I'm like, oh my god, two million!
And, and that's, that's-
I don't think it was that bad.
What are we buying?
The only thing you have to-
All the snowplow trucks, I mean, those are like a hundred thousand dollars.
Chipper, leaf machines, generator.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we, we have to buy these machines to use them for a couple of times a year? I mean, a leaf chipper, things like that, how many times a year do we?
Well, I will say that we, we do rent them out to other municipalities. It's not just something that we use, like the street sweeper. We just rented the street sweeper to Shrewsbury, which by the way, they said a major, major thank you for that.
Yeah, we just gotta thank you, dear Mr. Schaefer, Shrewsbury Borough, appreciate it, New Freedom Borough. Sweeping our roads this spring, Gary Green, your street sweeper completed the road sweeping, the three six and a half hours. In previous years, outside contractors built for almost double the hours at a much higher rate. We saved approximately five thousand dollars compared to previous years. Gary completed our twenty miles of roadways in excellent manner with little supervision. I provide Gary our road now, and it goes on and on. And hopefully, we can work together on other projects and continue to benefit our boroughs. It's a pleasure to work with New Freedom Borough, thank you for your assistance.
And that's something that we, as the I G C, Erica and I have been working on to try to get more and more. There may be a piece of equipment that Shrewsbury has or Shrewsbury Borough has that we don't have to go and buy, that we can rent from them instead of spending a hundred thousand too.
Yeah, but I'm hoping so, because a street sweeper estimated a replacement of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, now, the one we have has been seventeen years. That's sixteen thousand dollars a year, you better rent that thing out an awful lot to make up a lot of that sixteen thousand, which we use, what, street sweeper once, twice, three times a year? What do we use?
Twice a year.
Twice a year, oh, that's a good deal. And we rented it out for how much, fifteen?
Can you wait until public comment on other items, please? Anyway. Yeah, I think this is a great idea, and obviously took a lot of time. So that-
What you have to remember too is just the total dollar figure is factored into these calculations. So if a piece of equipment does not need replaced, you're not gonna replace it.
Right, yeah, and not, obviously, I mean, we have a very extensive, extensive plant maintenance system too, so, I mean.
We could go and, we could tend, send, take some of that machinery or equipment, put it in municipal bid and get a portion of that back.
And that's not factored into-
Correct.
So is that a motion, do we have a discussion yet?
I'm sorry, I, well.
Well, I just have a couple more things to discuss, you know, and you've talked about, we've, we've talked about at the, the last meeting with the BACO needing maintenance. All of works has requested that being replaced in the past, and you know, that's, we're looking at nineteen eighty-seven BACO. Should've most likely probably been replaced about twenty years ago.
Is the one that they just put some Moses in?
Right, we put about thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars into, into that, so.
Was it?
It's still cheaper than the payment. That's why they took two of it.
Yeah.
Need a repair for maintenance or it was broke?
Uh, it was, it was broken, yeah, the two items were broken. Yeah, couldn't use it, that's the one where the, the fan flew off and took the radiator out from one.
Is that what it is?
That's not operator error, was that maintenance, what's the maintenance schedule on that, where the fans are, fly off, I mean?
Oh, I can have, I mean, the, the guys, they take care of maintenance issues and preventative maintenance and upkeep, so there's not an issue there. Things happen unfortunately, but the age of equipment will impact that too.
Is there, is there a maintenance schedule for these thirty-something pieces of equipment?
Yep.
The manufacturer's recommendation, yes.
That's followed and logged?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they log their maintenance items, yeah.
The good thing is they hit the radiator and not a person.
Yeah.
That could've been.
So what do you need us to do, you mean, what, you want us to approve instituting this as a policy in the borough office?
Well, this would, this would be, be making a motion as council to establish a capital reserve fund. So it'd be another fund in your, your treasurer's report every month, and then we would fund it according to the schedule. However, there can be updates to that every budget year.
Sure.
But council would still have to approve each and every purchase, correct?
Oh, absolutely, sure.
Okay, I just- Yeah. Okay, alright, I would entertain a motion to institute this plan, which is really a very good, a very good way to stop budget spikes. Took a lot of time.
I'll make a motion that we approve the capital fund.
Capital reserve fund.
Or capital, excuse me, capital reserve fund.
Second. The second? Any other discussion in the week?
I have, I, I just have some concerns, just like Dennis raised up, that luckily didn't fly off and hit somebody. And that, like, some of this equipment that we have, I mean, we're just a two-square-mile borough, and to have all this equipment that, you know-
If you contracted this out, I, I wouldn't even wanna imagine what it would cost to be.
Well, has that, has that even been looked at, contracting some of these things out?
Well, I think this, I think this letter speaks volumes, I mean, this, this is just saying that Gary went over with our street sweeper, and they saved five thousand dollars by contracting with us to do it.
Yeah, they did, and if Shrewsbury, um, rents that from us every year, it would take over a hundred and eighty years for us to get the payback of the cost of that.
Well, that's, that's just them, they could be stewardesses.
Why worry about rental and making money back? Buy a piece of equipment to provide a service to your residents and to meet obligations. You're gonna, you're looking down the barrel of M S four requirements for stormwater. You're going to be required to complete all those street sweepings, you're gonna be required to log that information, you're gonna be required to do all the catchpiece including that you're gonna do with the street sweeper on the back. So I, I think, I, I don't understand the looking at what's gonna pay back in a certain amount of time. I mean, you have to have a dump truck to be able to plow snow, are you looking at, well, what's the payback on the dump truck? You have that, you have to provide that service to your residents.
Sure, sure, but back to like the street sweeper. So that's two hundred thousand dollars plus that our residents are taking on for Shrewsbury to get a good deal. We're assuming all of the liability, the cost, the maintenance, the upkeep?
No, no.
Well, what they rented for, I mean, I would be surprised if that covers the gas bill to run that machine for the day. And let alone like the legacy costs of the employees to run all this equipment. I just, I just think, and I'm, I'm concerned because I've been to school board meetings, and for the next eight years, our school board, our, our school taxes are going up. It is guaranteed, it is going up.
So why, why here again, why do the municipalities get the black eye from what the school district does? Because that's what happens across the board, all over the place. You, and this municipality provides an array of services to the residents. And, and I'll be honest with you, when you go to other municipalities of this size, in Pennsylvania, you are not going to find the level of service that this municipality provides to its residents at one point eight five mils. In the twenty-fifth percentile of tax rates for municipalities in York County. So I, I, I don't think it's a fair comparison all the time to what the school does.
Well, absolutely, we have to factor that in, because, because how are you gonna fund all this? You're gonna raise our taxes to fund, to fund this?
Now, wait a second, okay, so-
We're currently doing this.
The, the only thing that this does for you is it smoothes out your budget spikes. So for, for instance, if somebody comes, comes in and they say, we, you know, we need to replace the dump truck for the snowplow now, we'll have, we will have saved up the money to buy that, so it won't be a huge spike in our taxes, and we won't have to raise taxes.
That's like, do we really need to spend two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on a piece of machine that we use five times a year?
I think that's a separate conversation.
It is a separate conversation.
Absolutely, why, cause you're asking to-
It is, you're asking about buying, this is about establishing a, a guideline and a timeline of years.
To buy this equipment, and that's the question.
If we, if we need it, if we don't need it, we won't buy it, but we're making sure that the money is there, it's just to replace what we already have.
But that's, that's what I'm saying.
When we need it, if we need it.
But that's what I'm saying, I think there needs to be a different conversation in the review of all of this that we have, that some of these items, it would be more cost-effective to, you know, look at maybe leasing it or outsourcing it. Do we really need a crack sealer for fifty-something thousand dollars? Why, and how often do we use that, do we go around, I've seen them once out.
Well, well, when your streets start to deteriorate, and you have to pay sooner to repair them, you'll be glad you had the crack sealer to keep the water out.
But how often are you using the crack sealer, that's, that's the point, how often using the, the leaf, leaf machine? Six times a year, and, but you're looking at the insurance, the running.
With all due respect, Erica, we do not have a motion on the table to buy a crack sealer. We just have a motion on the table to save up, so if we need one later, we can get it. I, I take, I, I, I take what you're saying very well, I think it's, it's a good thing to go back and look and see, but that is a different, that's a different thing. That, you know, just because we set aside the money to replace the crack sealer doesn't mean we're gonna buy it. I mean, when that comes up, that's another, that, that could be another discussion too, whether or not we lease it, or whether or not we really need it, or whatever.
I just have a question, real quick question.
Sure.
When you purchase something with this amount of money, it's a lot of money these times, do you have different companies that, that bid that you?
Yeah, it's on coast, it's on.
Not that you just use one company, that you sort of shop around and-
It's all bid out, right.
It's all bid out.
If we get the proper number of bids and we get them.
Because sometimes they also sell something that's been used, for instance.
Oh, we look at that too, yeah.
That you're looking at, at the wall picture, that you're just going in there and using the one person, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if you can find a used piece of equipment, sure.
Right. And here is like the estimated replacement cost, how do we know what it's gonna be ten or twenty years from now?
Those costs have been, well, I agree with you, those costs have been taken what today's value, I think, in a fleet.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Flated by inflation.
We, we looked at five to ten percent, which, it, it doesn't, it might not be enough, but when you look at the funding schedule in the third page, you can see that we'll be ahead in basically all the years after twenty twenty-five of, of funding this, and, and possibly, you're, you're not factoring in any grants that could be awarded for, for instance, street sweeper and, and leaf machine. So leaf machine, you can get recycling, recycling grant money for, and there's also no interest earnings factored in there, so.
Let, let my question be.
And sale of assets. So we figured inflating that number and then not including in the fund balance those revenue sources will match any additional inflation.
Cause pretty much we're taken in the shorts every time we lend out our street sweeper by that amount of money. I mean, I went out as the I G C and kind of promoted that, cause I thought, okay, you know, I wasn't in on that decision to buy this piece of equipment at this amount of price, but maybe we can make something back on, on using it, you know? You know, the insurance we're laying out, and, and the maintenance, and the upkeep, and repairs, and it's, it's, it's going out for piddles.
And, well, I should've prefaced that, but that street sweeper did not cost, the one that's currently there now did not cost two seventy-five.
Like one sixty?
One sixty, yeah, but with everything else, um.
Sure, and that's, that's what I'm saying, I just think there needs to be a conversation of, you know, what, what can we maybe get out from under?
I, I agree a hundred percent, but that's not what this is about.
But, but, but I think that does it in service, cause, cause the cost of two million dollars you're saying to set aside, how do you know we wanna have all this in here without being able to have to, have next to it that, well, this might not be so cost-effective, and it would cost this to outsource it, or reach out to surrounding municipalities and like, oh-
When, when it comes up to replace the street sweeper, it'll come before Borough Council. And Borough Council will decide whether or not to replace the street sweeper. And if we're under M S four and getting ready to be under it, it'll be a requirement that we have to have it from somewhere. So we'll either have to be contracting it out, or we'll have to have it for ourselves. So that'll be a decision at that time, but that's not what this is about. This is about making sure we have enough money so our taxes don't spike, so that we don't have to say to people, well, we didn't save anything for this rainy day, and now we need two dump trucks and a street sweeper.
I feel like this is, I feel like this is something that the police commission should be looking at also, cause I feel like in the last year or two, they've had a unexpected vehicle purchase.
No, they do, they're planning ahead, three years in advance.
They do plan ahead, one, one of the things that we did, well, now we're getting off topic again, but one of the things was the K nine unit, you know, went up. So they had a replacement, but then that came in from donations, so, so that was really good. They didn't, you know, it didn't really cost the taxpayers anything, it came from private donations.
Where is the money coming from to fund these every year, eighty thousand and a hundred fifty-nine, and where's, where?
Well, so we're looking-
We have excess money right now?
Well, yeah, I mean, so when you look at, when you look at the budget for each fund, there's, annually, there's gonna be an amount factored in there, okay, we need to replace. So this year, it was replace the bucket truck. We looked at possibly out of the water fund, purchasing the valve, exerciser and vacuum. So those line items, they wouldn't be, they would be basically eliminated because then your expense would bump down to a transfer from general fund, from water fund, from sewer fund, into capital reserve, capital reserve would recognize that as revenue, and then your expense would come out of the capital reserve fund.
And the notes are right on here, you know, interest earnings are not reflected, small thing, grants are gonna be researched, sale of assets are not included, that's gonna happen. So, you know, I mean, this is just setting aside enough money to cover us for, for this, the equipment.
I understand, I'm not, you know, I see you did a lot of work here, I understand, I think you're just jumping way ahead of maybe some other information that could be relevant to make a sound decision on if, if we need to.
The other, the other way to look at it is if you, if you budget for an amount in a year, I mean, you can also, when the time comes, you can take, you can apply an interest rate and inflation factor, you can say, it's gonna, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna contract this out for twenty years, what's the present worth cost of that for twenty years? Inflated at a certain interest rate, you can make a comparison that way. But there's a lot of unknowns when you wanna go stretch it out fifteen years versus if you own the equipment, cause you know you have it.
So why do you think these boroughs around us keep wanting to use our street sweeper?
Same reason, we wanna use their boot truck to put up our Christmas lights and decorate our tree, and we don't buy one, we don't have one.
Cause it's a great deal. Well, they wanna keep using it cause it's a great deal, but we're assuming all the risk and liability for that deal.
They pay, they pay.
Barely.
How do we know barely? How do we know barely?
Well, but isn't that, I mean-
Because of the amounts I'm being told are being charged.
I mean, the reason we set up the Intergovernmental Committee was to try to make friends and participate and to, you know, I think the Intergovernmental Committee, while you can't reach out and say, this is what it did, you can reach out and say, Shrewsbury Township is joining with, with us on the storm project. Hope Well is joining with, on, I think overall, it says to the, to the other municipalities, yeah, New Freedom wants to play ball, maybe we should take a bat and a glove and go play ball with them.
Which we never had that before.
We never had that before at all.
I think the IGC, I, I enjoy going out to all the boroughs.
So I, so I don't, I guess I, I, I don't care that they, that, you know, we saved them five thousand dollars. I think that, that, that wasn't to go pay for the street sweeper, it was to establish, to, you know, in part pay for our labor and a little bit of the street sweeper, but it wasn't to go out and cover the cost of a new street sweeper, it was a bridge, bridge building thing.
I was under the impression that it wouldn't be given away at such a dirt cheap cost that barely covers. You know, what, what happens?
What, what, we don't even know how much we charged them, but what did we charge them? I was, I mean, we're talking about, we gave it away, but we don't know what it's cost.
And we, and we have another question, so we have, one of, one of our employees is over there running this the whole time. What's he being taken away from? So, you know, how, why is there time for one of our employees to go away for a day? Do we have like-
Somebody else is paying for our employee for that day.
Okay, I, I, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a statement here, we have a motion on the table to approve this plan. Uh, I mean, the things you're bringing up are all valid, I don't disagree with what you're bringing up, but they have nothing to do with the motion. And, and it's nine thirty now. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but I mean, that's just a fact. I mean, you're supposed to make a motion, discuss the motion, come to a conclusion.
We have to take money away from, from other things and put forward two million into this? That's what I'm saying is-
But you're pouring, you know, you're pouring a hundred and fifty-nine thousand a year, which is not a lot of money. What you're trying not to do is to get to a certain point and have to put in, out a couple million dollars, which will be an impact to taxes. So what we're trying to do is soften the blow, not have, and there's no guarantee that we're going to spend this money. We're putting money away, but when we get to that point, we may or may not buy that. We may very well, you may, we may sit here as a council and say, we don't want a street sweeper, let's subcontract it.
And may I make a point too, when we're looking at this, look down through the departments. As soon as you see sewer, you know that's not gonna be a full price that we're gonna pay. We're gonna be paying less than fifty percent of that because Shrewsbury Railroad is gonna be paying basically the two of them, the bulk of it, and maybe by the time we get there, we'll have Hope Well and Shrewsbury Township involved and we might be paying twenty percent of that total. There's a lot of money involved here that says sewer. So, that's not coming out of us, but I'm gonna, I'm, let me say one more thing. I paid off my car two years ago, okay? Every month, whatever I was paying on that car, I put it in the bank in my savings account because I know someday I'm gonna need another car. And when I do, I don't wanna have to panic, where's that money gonna come from? I could afford it when I paid for the original car, let's put that money away and I have a nice down payment, I'm gonna pay less and my interest rate is probably gonna be better.
And when you get there, you might decide to lease.
No, never again.
I'm just curious, it's been three hours and we are at page the first page. Are we gonna be another three, get, come in?
I don't know.
You know if it takes that, I'm-
I'm sorry?
We have two leaf machines?
Yeah, if you've seen the replacement value zero, when that one, when that one, uh, basically completely fails and dies, we're not, we're only replacing one.
But we have two right now.
We do, yeah, and they are running two, um, but we haven't upstayed, which is difficult. But, uh, when this one was purchased, they were going to, uh, sell this one, but they put some, uh, put a couple parts into it, which was nothing at all. And they're running that so that they can, you know, and they're still doing leaves for six weeks, so it's six weeks.
I think we, we got a grant for part of that original leaf machine, all we did was maintain it, but, you know, it only lasted long, it's got used a lot, uh, leaf season. So, yeah, it's just sitting there now, it's, it's sort of like, you, it's got a useful life, it's gone, but it's, there's still, still some value or some use we can get out of it, and like you say, once it craps out, it's a snowplow.
Is there any discussion on setting up the capital reserve fund with the obvious understanding that we don't necessarily have to buy any funds on the list?
No, we're talking about asset management right here, we're not talking about procurement.
Right, exactly.
Right. How you're gonna appreciate it and where you're gonna value it.
We're just talking about saving money for a rainy day.
All right, all, all in favor of the rainy day fund, say aye.
Aye, aye.
I know this now.
If nothing else, it's an expression, what it's gonna cost one way or another, whether you, uh, present worth it over twenty years or you buy it outright, but it's gonna cost something. And it's got a present worth value.
Well, I mean, even, even if you get to the point where you say, okay, it's time to buy the street sweeper and you say, let's go out and see what we can get it done for, if we sub it out, and then you take this money and you pay for part of that.
We know what it's gonna cost because right here, this is, we said it done, six thousand dollars, so, you know, ten thousand dollars a pop.
The other thing to remember, some, with some, you may not get it when you want it, you may get it when it's available. And, you know, I've heard municipalities have the same problem, if they want something done, well, you're gonna have to wait in line to get it done.
Well, I mean, and, and not to, not to drag this out even further, but I mean, if you sub out your snow removal, your snow removal might not get done when you want it to be done, it's gonna get done when you're on the list.
Some municipalities are doing it. Glen Rock, I don't think has a snowplow.
Yeah, all right, we wanted to talk a little bit about June council meeting dates. I have no problem keeping the June council meeting the date that it is. I understand Brunel can't make it because Denise is going in for, uh, uh, surgery then. We can, we have a couple people that can't make it June sixth, so the option would be to keep it the way it is now or to move it to the twentieth.
Do we have a assistant secretary?
Yeah, yeah, I said, we don't have, I don't have a problem.
You can have the packets, you know, I mean, before, so.
Yeah, right, and, you know, mine's at the end of, uh, end of the week before into the first couple days of that week, so we can still have packets ready.
Yep, so, so, and I'll make sure that that's plugged in, so we definitely have- Yeah, and I can start your little recorder and, and I'll pass on. Does anyone have a problem just keeping it where it is?
No.
Okay, do you wanna pause?
I think I'm in the minority, I can't do this, or the, I'm sorry.
Keeping it for fifteen?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Sounds good, so that's over. All right, Southern Regional Police Department, oh, we did the-
In there, done.
Uh, okay, administrative reports, we don't have a solicitor report.
He just, I, he wasn't able to attend tonight, he did say he has, uh, he received the mayor's, uh, coordinates for a fire pit. I sent him one as well, so he's working on finding this and making a draft, uh, burning fire pits.
Shrewsbury has a very specific one that I sent a copy to him. Basically, what it says is you need a fire bowl or you've gotta have, you can't do it on the ground, it's gotta be on a substrate, you know? Off, it's gotta be so high, but they basically have no burning pretty much at all, which I'd love to see.
I'm, I'm really sorry. So, okay. Um, my question for hanging the leaves, do we wanna have a continuation meeting?
I don't- I think we have.
I was gonna say, there's-
Oh.
The rest is just reports.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks. Sorry. Okay, manager report.
You have the report in front of you. We talked a little bit about, at the last meeting about the Regional Planet Commission. Requests and proposals went out again, they still only got one that meets the requirements for the CDBG funding, so we're able to move forward with CS Davidson on that. And as a reminder, um, you know, you're looking at a ninety thousand dollar project and your freedom's cost is fifteen hundred dollars, which is amazing. Um, street projects are done, we should have the application for payment. For the June meeting, there are a couple little punch list items that need to be completed. The ARPA reporting period ended March thirty-first, the report was due April third. We had all of our information compiled by April sixth and filed that. So for the first period, uh, in ARPA funds, we spent fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy-three dollars and a couple cents. And that was all on stormwater improvements, according to the schedule that council previously approved and ahead of the street projects. So we had to rush to get it done, um, but there were some of those streets that had stormwater projects al- also had, uh, street overlay projects, so, um, it was, it was a little bit of a-
That additional money though from ARPA for the first check's not gonna be a waste or anything, correct?
Oh, we have till twenty twenty-
Sixth?
Sixth, yeah, so, and believe me, we, that's just, that was just expenses till the thirty-first.
Because we've got another check supposedly coming out.
Hopefully next month, that's my understanding from the managers' meeting, everybody is under the impression that, you know, we're still expect, as long as you filed that initial paperwork, which we did, and you filed your first reporting period, which we did, you should receive your second application in June. So we should be fine there. What, just one other thing I wanted to hit on, crosswalks. We've been talking about this for over a year now. Uh, we finally have everything we need to go out to bid for Main Street and Franklin Street crosswalks. And we have the approvals from PennDOT, we have an internal review done. The only thing, I have a meeting tomorrow with Northern Central Railway just to make sure that they understand what we're doing, they've been involved in the process. So, uh, that, I think we're finally there.
I think I sent you something too, that there was money available for crosswalks?
Yeah, there is money, and the Trail Town is putting money into this as well.
They are, good, okay, I, I think that was it, the Trail Town, great.
Quick question, I don't, I think this is not so much crosswalk, but it involves the, um, uh, Main Street. Somebody asked me about, um, next to Freedom Green, there's a sidewalk. Cross over the alley going towards the bike trail, there's no crosswalk as you enter the gravel area and then there's another cross, uh, sidewalk after the bike trail. If there was a reason for that, was that something with the railroad right away because it's park, like county park?
I mean, within the park itself.
Well, within, right there on Main Street.
It's a little, little piece of missed sidewalk, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, when you open the trail down to the gazebo, there's no sidewalk.
Correct.
There's a, there's a drainage thing, but not a-
I think that's cleaned up in the, in the crosswalk project.
Okay.
I think that's on the schedule.
I, I wasn't sure if they've kind of got it tied up, because it's a state road slash county park type thing. But somebody, somebody asked me about it and I thought, um, why?
I'll, I'll take a look at that, make sure that that's covered in there.
Okay, thank you.
Good, so we are gonna get some assistance with that, that's-
Absolutely, yeah.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
I have my condition on, Mr. Megger. Let's hit on the high points and then we'll forget the rest.
You wanna stop watching?
The Glen Rock Town Hall that we talked about for this past month was canceled, they did not have a town hall. Tennis courts were having a problem again, apparently with skateboarders. I tried to keep an eye on it, but somebody said there must have been ten, fifteen kids one Sunday. I can't keep an eye on it twenty-four hours a day, even though it's my backyard. If you guys see it, because I've been told people are seeing it, oh, I see it, call the police, please. That's part of your responsibility and your duty, because we have a, a, an ordinance against it.
Someone take a hammer to the tennis court? Because it really seems like it's a circle, that.
Or did they set off fireworks or a M eighty or something like that to get them to look burnt? I couldn't dig it out and look at it.
The skateboarders have a, a rail, metal rail that they're using and that punched a hole.
What, what about the cameras?
Uh, I, the damage to the tennis court occurred on a Thursday evening between eight and nine. I reviewed the cameras, um, the, the quality of the cameras at that time of the night was not sufficient to be-
Even with all the light that's-
Well, but the problem is, is that camera sits in the wellhouse.
Oh, I thought there was one on the pole, on the pole beam, oh, that's the one that goes out there.
Faces out the other way.
Faces the other way, so, yeah. Basically, the quality at that time of the night was very grainy. I mean, I could see the kids, and you're right, it was about ten to fifteen of them skateboarding. Uh, I could see them running around doing things, uh, but even one walked right past the wellhouse, I could not make out. Uh, it was too grainy, so I asked the police department to look at that time and see if they had anything. And I did speak with chief and, uh, you know.
You did, you have spoken to chief about?
Yeah, the officer, they're gonna, sorry, enforce it, yeah. But I, I was expecting those cameras to be able to see more.
Well, you and me-
Well, we were led to believe they would be able to.
Yeah, and I know, um, Shrewsbury's buying five more, they have a bunch and they're buying five more from IC, CIA. But maybe we can look into, talk to Adam and see if there's a problem. They're supposed to come down and do, what, twice a year and-
They perform a check, yeah, I mean, I think, I think the only thing there is that camera was directly in the corner of the tennis courts where all the light is and pointed on the tennis courts and-
Wouldn't bother me if we did that, I thought there was one there originally.
Did you just get it on top of their head though?
Well, the other thing is that camera is set to, it's not focused on a surface, wide angle. So when you try to zoom then, you just don't have your clarity.
You're gonna pixelate, you're gonna pixelate that picture.
Um, okay, we went over IGA, tennis program, is that on our website calendar? What's going on with the, so people know if they're, that they can't play pickleball this day, that day?
I told Mary Ann to make, double check her dates of all of her programs, whether it's the community center down here at the park and call into the borough and make sure that she is verified, all of that.
We, we already made signs to post about the dates and times that the-
It's a good idea.
Yeah, because she only had Saturday morning up when I looked. And I know it's Friday and then she's gonna do some free clinics too. So, last thing we need to now have pickleball courts and then they can't play because, well, I didn't know, you know, I just wanna make sure it's on our calendar. Storage closet at the community center, I know we talked about making sure that that is cleaned out for, I forget his name, for voters. Ten days ahead of time, you can't get in that thing. I wanna know, does tasteful occasions pay to rent that? And if not, get your stuff out, because nobody else can use it. The fire department always used it, they don't have any place to put pickleball equipment, they don't, nobody has any place. As a matter of fact, today, all their crap was out all where they play pickleball.
Yeah, I, I will make that call to-
Rafi needs to get it together, he's got a whole new room that he put a, a walk-in, he's on up, using half of it. Put it in there, we need that to be available for storage.
It should be locked, those rolling machines in there should be locked and nobody should have a key to that, why those machines are there?
That's right, um, when we, uh, redo the leases too, we need to specify what areas are covered.
I believe this does, and I believe it does say that, it does, it does have a bunch of room numbers and storage closets listed in his lease, but, yeah, we need to make sure that that's active.
Yeah, that was always the fire company and somebody split it in half and put another room off the back of it.
Yeah, splits, yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's that, generator to community center, we need to make sure that you and I discussed that. Generator to community center, we need to make sure that you and I discussed that, that does belong to the borough. Part of it does.
The one that's behind the fire hall, correct?
Yes.
The one that got disconnected from the community center.
It is not disconnected, it never has been, we were misinformed. Because that, it was, yeah, that happened a lot.
Did we send anything formally renouncing ownership?
Yes, we did during a council meeting. Okay, you want it, you don't wanna pay for maintenance, cause maintenance was done and we charged them seven thousand dollars when really, half of that should have gone to the borough for the community center.
I agree.
So, okay, that's, that's that. That generator is hooked up. Uh, I, I know, I was just looking over some other things, PSAB, Borough Audit, that's completed, we'll wait for more on that.
What do we have to do with the generator, is there an action on that?
Well, I, I really would like us to take back at least half of the ownership of, of the generator or discuss it. We don't need to discuss it tonight, we're late.
Okay, can you, can you talk, can, does anyone have any problem if you talk to the fire company and, and broker that deal for us?
No, I have a meeting with them next Thursday.
Does anyone have a problem with that?
Okay, yeah, we can...
Okay, yeah, they kind of got...
Railroad?
Railroad, yeah, that's a little bit of work, railroaded on that and, uh, they really should not have.
Okay.
Great, my phone just turned off and my Face ID won't work. Okay, uh, Borough Audit, do we have results?
Uh, it was, it was completed, um, everything was reported to DCD. Usually those are a couple weeks after that, so I'll, I'll check with them.
Okay, but we will go over that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, she left, we have a meeting about the video room here, whatever you wanna call it, video, audio, Wednesday at three o'clock. With a company, I'll tell you exactly who it is, it's Best Buy, they have a commercial division.
Geek Squad?
No, it's not Geek Squad.
We had, we actually had them in.
Geek Squad is here, this, they are here, all they do is businesses. And they gave me a rough estimate that they could do everything for between six and seven thousand dollars. We'll see, three o'clock Wednesday, they'd be here, you're on the commit.
We got an email, we got an email today.
Yeah, I sent you the email. Uh, Culver Point, to your point, I've got some complaints about Culver Point. That cars are parking right at the stop signs, of course, we all know that's not allowed, talked to chief about it, it's, you requested. They will not do anything unless those lines are painted on there yellow, they can't, they must be painted.
And, and my point to that is, do you really wanna start painting curbs in residential development?
Sure, we always did before, I'm on residential development, I got yellow curbs, yellow on my curbs. He can't enforce it unless they're there.
Okay, what is, what do you do if there's no curbs?
There is a curb, that is a curb.
At that particular intersection, some neighborhoods like, uh, Country Mountain Lane, there's no curb, it's grass.
By, by law, it's what, twenty feet? Thirty feet from a stop sign, you can't park twenty feet.
If, if you do in a grassy area, what can you do in a curb area?
I've seen some places where all they have is a curb, like up on Singer. And, you know, they mound the asphalt and they go by, and they do painting.
Okay, if, if you were to, that's there, what, what do they go by?
I think they just go by the actual distance.
That's what I would have assumed, I don't, I don't think we had to have it...
They will not do anything unless there is a yellow line marked because the borough has taken control and taken over those roads.
There's gotta be a reason you couldn't just put a yellow line down the side of the road and to show...
Yeah, I mean, I agree, but I'm saying...
Let me get, let me get, let me, I can get together with, um, with the district magistrate and see if we can have some, a community service thing if you want. Get some Boy Scouts, get the, I'll go out with them with a can of Sprite, go start painting.
I mean, we can, right, you, you can do it volunteer base, we can handle that. But I've had conversations with residents in Culver Point that specifically said, can we do this? And like, okay, here's what we have to do.
It's not, it's not up to them, it's up to us if they wanna be policed.
Just giving you the feedback from the residents is...
I know, I've got the same feedback.
You know what, we'll deal with it, we don't wanna see all the curbs painted yellow.
Well, now the police saying we're not gonna do anything, you know, up here if they're painted yellow, if they're not painted yellow. So, they're saying they have to be painted yellow.
And so, there's no responsibility or obligation on part of the driver to know how to far apart from stops? I thought, you know, why wouldn't taking driver's test in New York, I mean, that was one thing you had to know.
It's in the code.
It's like you talked about earlier, with the normal parking, it's, you, you have to know, you have to be...
Well, that kind of thing, drive a car.
It's, we went through with the, with the rollerskates, or rollerskates with, um, skateboards on the, in the park. The police would not enforce it unless the signs were up, and the signs had to be up on every door. God knows I tried, we had alone two doors, oh, that wasn't good enough, then we had to put alone all four doors. Well, then, a cop would get down and they would tell the kids to get off the, yeah, here's the sign, get off.
Write me a ticket about the, the stop sign situation, take the magistrate, see what happens.
But the police won't do it, can we, we can't do that, that's a vehicle violation, so it's...
Well, you, you can, if you, if it's in your parking ordinance, yeah, you could write it to the board.
Do we have a parking ordinance?
I don't think that, I don't think, I don't think it addresses how far from the stop sign.
Park next to mark curbing would be a violation.
But it's not...
We're not gonna mark the curbing, that's the whole problem.
Well, but you can, you can reference, if we reference another vehicle and just say, as, using as an example, or you could say Parker didn't, somebody beat up a fire, fire stop sign. Mailbox or driveway, I don't know.
Well, they, they, he's telling me they will not enforce any of that unless they're painted yellow. Personally, I'd like to see them painted yellow the right way the rest of the town is. It's a safety issue because you pull up, you can't see. To pull out in front of another vehicle and until somebody gets hurt, killed, maimed, you know, then it, then, I don't know, can it come back on the borough? Because we didn't have it and enforce it when...
No, there's no, there's no requirement of motor vehicle curbing to paint your curb yellow, it's a, it's a responsibility of the driver to know.
Number of feet.
That, okay.
That's why I just don't understand why they want it.
I think, I think you need to talk to them as...
They don't want it, the HOA, the HOA does not want it.
They don't take motor vehicles.
Are you, are you, are you in the HOA, you're in the HOA, you're not on their, an officer or anything? I don't know, I'm just getting back to you on your request.
Yeah.
Which I passed on, was very disappointing.
Let's move on.
Okay, um...
So, it's not his office?
No, it's not, I, I really honestly think that the police need to enforce the, what it says in the driver's ed book that you take with your test, that you have to be...
I will take that back and see if we can get anywhere with it, and I don't understand why they can't. They just cite this code number and it says so many feet from a stop sign, here's your ticket, have a nice day.
Right, and then they, if it goes to court, and they wanna protest it, and it goes to court, they say, here's the picture.
Well, and the other thing I got, what are my guys gonna do? They're gonna run around with tape measures in their car, measure how far they are from the stop sign? I mean, that's, I mean, not a good excuse.
I, I think you look at it, you use your best judgment, your common sense and you say, you know...
Can you not put a sign that says no parking from here to corner?
Well, yeah, you could do that.
Yeah, but depending on where you put it, you're gonna take up basically half of his yard. And if you make him go back any further, he's probably parking in front of his driveway.
Yeah, but you're, you put it in the, you put it in the sidewalk.
You're gonna park on the sidewalk?
No, 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 you put the side on the sidewalk, no parking here in a corner.
That's what I'm saying, but then you're forcing him to come back even further into the neighborhood, which is then closer to his driveway, which in this case would probably be almost in front of his driveway.
But he can go, I don't know what you're talking about, he can go along the driveway.
You do that when you go up to the house, you know, and...
No, he didn't, the sign wasn't there then.
Well, nobody should know that he can't park within a certain distance of a stop sign.
The stop sign was there, but now that he's parked there.
Right. Okay, well, we'll, we'll deal with it.
Can you talk to chief again and...
I will, I will.
Okay, I'm sure that that's, that the law states feet, doesn't say, I mean, obviously a yellow curb...
One's twenty feet, one's thirty feet, I forget what it is, but I'll look to them. Okay, Farmer's Market, do we have dates on our calendar for Farmer's Market?
Absolutely.
Okay, just wondering. Andy, you probably don't know this, we lost our MS supervisor.
No, I did.
Yeah, I know, well, they've assigned a temporary fill-in, hopefully, you know, we'll see. Abby McManus, I've asked them to get together with Ed to fill her in so that she can attend the meeting Thursday. Cause we're gonna kind of be starting from scratch here with New Freedom, if that's the, the case. Red light school buses were up to five months and a hundred and twenty-six events. Unfortunately, the gentleman that spearheaded that campaign will no longer take part because he's been threatened with his job if he continues.
You guys been putting it on Facebook?
Yep, because he's trying to save...
Lives.
Lives of kids, they've had a hundred and twenty-six, in five months, that was another thirty.
Did he put that on Facebook that, or he was threatened with his job from...
No.
Well, that would really...
I'm not mentioning his name because you and I, we all know...
I was gonna say, he was, he was having updates and I haven't seen anything lately, so...
That's because he's been asked, not to the bus company and the school, um, someone from the school board said, we don't want you talking about it.
Why?
Can you, can you tell me?
You figured that one out, because, because they don't like the idea that they're gonna have to spend money or deal with the transportation department and the, the bus company.
Kim, can you text me the name later?
Yes. You got, I sent back to thank you from the street sweeper, um...
We're about to exit.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I was asked, um, if, I think you brought up last year, a free yard sale?
We did.
I had a couple people ask me about it, is it something we wanna do again?
People took advantage of the last year.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I think it's dead for a community, I absolutely do. Do we wanna take a date, when was the date last year, and we wanna go around the same time? Or do you wanna wait till next meeting, we got time?
Yeah.
Is, yeah, okay, that's...
Put it on the agenda for next week.
Yeah.
So, you had a long report, Kim, from the last meeting, you're gonna email all that to Andrew?
Yeah.
That's what the decision was last month.
Well, I...
You have to email it to Andrew to make it easier for him.
I don't though.
You do.
I don't follow the, I don't follow...
He wasn't the mayor, he wasn't the mayor last meeting.
That's right. I wasn't here, I wasn't here.
But Andrew...
He's got, he has a copy of the...
Engineer Monthly Progress Report? We have a revised estimate on the slider thing?
I was just gonna ask, I keep saying that a lot, what is going on?
Well, the long and the short of it is, we had an inaccurate estimate way back when, and now we're gonna play catch-up, so...
Is that because of cost of materials?
No.
No. It's a error by a previous employee.
So, we need to replace, it's something that we use, we need to get it replaced.
This is the water that we get by...
The blue one?
Yeah, yeah.
What have, what have we been doing while this is out of order?
Well, it's not out of order.
It's not out of order, it just needs to be replaced.
Right.
It's causing, it's a pain to operate. If you had a tank like that, we'd...
Do we know price?
Is the replacement that big?
Yeah, it's like one point three mil, um, that's just a tire thing.
It's gonna be that size, not larger?
Smaller, smaller, but...
Or even higher, right?
Well, it has to, the goal there is to match elevations. So, you're, you're not fighting, the tanks aren't fighting each other.
So, taller, taller than what's previous then?
Uh, yes, yes.
Have we, is that, all right, I don't know that that's been ever done before, as far as with residents.
Well, I mean, we're only in early permitting stages at this point, so...
No, I understand that we're not.
How's that being funded?
Well, that was part of the issue, that's what we talked about, it's been a couple meetings, but, um, if you remember, the, uh, hazard mitigation from PMA. We applied for, working on applying for basically three point four million dollars to fund that, uh, to get that tank replaced under Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Originally, it was supposed to be funded, uh, from water funds, it was supposed to be funded from the last general mitigation, but the estimate that was used to borrow those funds was not corrected yet.
What estimate was used?
I do not know, I was before me, and I...
No, it was a new cart horn, but it was, I think it was misinterpreted to say the, I guess, you know, it's basically, it was half what it's...
Correct.
So, about half of the three point eight was the estimate to replace this tank?
It was a shock.
When did we find this out, that this estimate was wrong, how long ago?
I think it was towards the end of the year.
Yeah.
Last year.
Yeah, but we are, but we've been working, trying to get grants, and we have grants outstanding and hopefully...
Do we know when those grants are due back to...
Right now, they're just in the review, even the one that was completed a couple weeks ago, a couple months ago, is actually still in the review phase.
So, I know these can take a long time sometimes, are you looking like a year out and...
At least, yeah.
At least a year out.
And the update as of April seventh on, just on the tank not installed was two point six. So, the, basically, the total pricing would be three point six.
And then, we're replacing it, but this one, I mean, do we expect it to give out in the next year?
Well, Donnie said he could operate without it for short periods, I mean, I, I don't think we're like in danger of any resident losing water service. But it, it needs to be done in a timely manner.
One, one other problem, I think maintaining current residual too, he has a problem maintaining current residual with the range when it's out there.
It's big work, I guess.
I think the worst that can happen is we have to hook in the York Water and use theirs.
Oh, yes, what's the update on that?
I do not have an update on that.
What, did we reach out to them at all yet?
I am trying to find the correct person and I have not been able to do that yet, so I, that's the only update, I haven't made any other progress on that. I will continue now.
Any other questions on new cart horn? Any questions on New Freedom River Water?
Just a quick question on this, on the York Water thing, when we get rid of the York Water connection and the costs associated with it, will we still have the capability of having an emergency hookup in?
Nope.
That will...
How we can, well, that's, I'm getting rid of the connection, we have to figure out, we have to find the right people to talk to, and then we have to enter into a negotiation with them.
And we need to pay them probably some kind of fee to maintain the connection, but not buy any water. That's really, the, the lo, the, the long-term goal is to negotiate with them so that we maintain a connection, but we only use it as an emergency connection. And they're probably gonna have to have some kind of lease charge or something to, to get, motivate them to keep the connection and whatever.
Well, I can find the person for you.
Okay.
I'll, I'll take that as a to-do.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Uh, questions on the wastewater operations? When's the next meeting with anybody when it comes to a sewer?
Uh, we did send an email out to the sewer users group, uh, that we met with our KKK, uh, they just, last, well, the week before, got everything back from Biomag. Which is the, what the feasibility study is based on implementing. Uh, we are waiting, they are waiting on electrical data and blower, air blower, provides the air to the system information. And at that point, once they have that, they should have the study finalized, feasibility study finalized, and we're anticipating that to be late May or June. And at that point, they were instructed that they're to prepare a presentation to the entire group. So it's not us trying to relay the information, it's the consultant relaying the information to the group.
And in the meantime, nobody from Shrewsbury Township has, um, access to any sewer capacity, right? Until, unless Shrewsbury decides to give it to them.
Yeah, that's not, yeah, that, that's not really on New Freedom, that's up to.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I know, but I, I.
Eric and I hear it every, every month at the meeting.
The only thing I will say is, is, I, I don't like using the term, it's not fair, but it's, it's not. It's not fair to really point the finger at New Freedom saying that those projects can't move forward because. New Freedom's having to study them, that's holding things up. Well, that's not entirely true, there's capacity, and there's that.
And there's EDUs available for Shrewsbury. The, the smart thing to do would be for Shrewsbury Borough to release the EDUs, and then have Shrewsbury Township replenish them when they bought the EDUs. Right. That would be the thing that.
Shrewsbury Borough is saying they don't wanna allocate capacity above what the plant can handle, and I can respect that.
Yeah, sure, but they, but that one.
But that's where we're at at this point.
Right. And I did find, I did find out that some of the EDUs that are reserved, that we thought were in Ag Pres are not Ag Pres properties. There's something else, and they can be developed at a certain, at some time, and there was a major, like, hundred and forty-four EDU, um, reserve on a phone. So, they don't have those that they can utilize, but, I mean, all this for fourteen EDUs. Okay, zoning and land development.
And that's on the Frankin Square of the street?
Oh, again, Lester.
Building, I mean. Yeah, the permits under, the buildings are under construction, and that's the only update we have at this point. There's no tenants selected for building two at this point. For commercial, obviously residential we feel, as they're needed vortex group, that's building one, yeah.
Are they gonna take the whole floor, first floor?
Yes.
Is that what they would like to do? Have somebody else take the whole first floor of the several building or individual?
Yeah, yeah, they're looking, they're, the out, the fit out would be, you know, be two, three, four, I think, at the most.
It'd be nice if we could get several.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Kevin Forster?
I think that's on number two. It says that it was closed because the majority of junk and debris was removed. All?
It's just a word.
No, I just, I lied about, there's no update picture, I mean, I, you know, I don't, what is the majority, what?
Yeah, I mean, we, we observed it from the rear yard, and the majority of the really causing an issue and, and called it out in subsequent letters. Cleaned up, organized.
Tractors.
Well, that's.
Tractors are outgoing, right?
Yeah, that's in the description. And we did receive a response later to that one.
So he's passed through the compliance state, right? Has that been extended?
For.
Twenty-sixth, for the unfloored storage.
Right, that's the one that we just got the letter from on Friday, so.
And that, he re, he responded, and then now we have to respond back?
I don't think, at this point, but the letter indicates that the, not how much. Can only do it in detail during the, but. Letter indicates that the ones being covered are still operable, not being dismantled, functional, so. I, I guess at this point, we have to prove otherwise.
We have to prove, so we said, wait up and say start them, run around the yard, right?
Or, well, or we filed magistrate, and he has to prove to the magistrate that they're functioning, operable, not being dismantled, uh, yeah.
I mean, we all saw, they, it looked like they even had decks on them, some of them.
Most of them have been removed, there are a couple that have been removed.
Okay. Um, also, that particular property that we will not mention is, uh, being, has been sent a bill from the fire company for a spill cleanup.
That was two months ago?
Of several vehicles, yeah, he's gotten a bill from the fire company, I think I sent you a copy of, you have an, Andrew, you have a copy of that? Sent it to you and Andy, you got it, right?
I think I did, yeah, it's on my.
Let's, I'll make sure you get it, I, I sent it to.
So how's it being filled through, what's, do you need direction?
I, I, honestly, I guess we do, because it's. The argument's going to be that they're not being dismantled, that they're operable, they serve different functions. I, I guess I'm kind of at a loss here on how to prove otherwise, without. Filing.
Still talking about number two, Fred?
Three, thank you.
So the only outstanding issue are the tractors?
Other storage, and that could be other equipment as well.
But that's only if they're not operable, if you don't have to be in closed storage or not.
It's, uh, give me a second here, pull up the language.
Does that under the IPMC?
No, that's under those end points.
Tarp, so Harville, Michigan, Robbins?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, putting a tarp over isn't the resolution, correct?
Right, because of the way this is worded. Dismantled or partially dismantled or abandoned automobiles, tractors, recreational vehicles, trailers and trucks must be parked or stored within an enclosed building. So that's, so.
They're saying they run, so that's, or that's the issue.
But they're not stored.
But they're dismantled.
You say they're not. Well, I think we need to send somebody up to say, let me see it, run it. It's the only way we can enforce it.
The, the last part about a building?
You can, you can have that, those things, if they're, if they're in closed building.
You have almost anything.
Right, but they're, but they're.
So if they have no decks, they're dismantled?
No. Why? Cause you could use a tractor for other things besides moving grass.
Like a PTO in the front?
Or snow, or.
Yeah, I.
To push-start one of the coils, it doesn't have a battery. But yeah, I mean, the only other thing you could, I think that's the next step, is someone's gonna go and see if they run. Or you could go, either way's fine, go to the magistrate and make us bring it in.
Put it on the magistrate instead of us.
Yeah, that's what I'm, but. It's the next step, I mean, if you're gonna keep pursuing. I don't think the magistrate will put up with any of this stuff, I really don't. I have seen her in action, and she just will not, she knows, she can see. Is that, is that our direction?
Agreed.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, just, do we need a motion, or just?
No.
So proceed.
Yep, we're good.
Okay.
I will say, the last two went to the magistrate on Friday.
Great, we will get that fixed.
Yep.
We're talking about four, five and six.
Yeah.
The pictures, four, five and six.
Yeah, correct, sorry.
There was no, no, uh, response. So they filed up the magistrate.
Recreation?
I was unable to attend the meetings with Tracy, Kim and Erica, were you there?
Yeah, we pretty.
In West Virginia, might have to go back.
I was there, we filled in for you, we pretty much covered everything while she was here.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I think we've basically covered on everything before, we talked about the farmer's market.
The farmer's market.
Alright, so you already have a copy of this, so that's useful.
Yeah, I, I need to get clarification on it, because I, I am helping them with the farmer's market flyer.
Yeah.
Which is ready, but then it says about directional signage, we did discuss that, but I have to talk to Mary Ann about that, I thought she was.
I do, well, one somewhat related, so last, I guess last month, we, we approved the purchase of the mobile sign?
Yep, it's here, ready to go.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Just got it Friday.
Okay, I was gonna ask if we could have that set up at a location of their.
Donnie and I already talked about it this afternoon, we were trying to pick out a good location for it.
Awesome, thank you.
Cool.
In the rep council meeting, they had, and you see it right here, they said it was gonna be concerts in the park, then they said, no, we don't want concerts in the park. We are calling it Saturdays in the Park.
Saturdays.
I know, it says concerts right there, remember that? Were you there?
I remember that, I think, yeah, that would have been two meetings, you'd, I didn't know that they had officially decided.
You were even there, Kim?
I don't remember them saying anything.
Saturdays, cause I wrote it in here when it was gonna be, and then they decided, nope.
What does that mean? I don't think I was there at that meeting.
Cause it's Saturday, so they don't, they didn't call it concerts in the park, they wanted to call it Saturdays in the Park.
Why?
What does that mean?
That it's gonna be a fun Saturday in the park.
For everyone, gays and.
So I just wanted clarification, what are you calling it, or was it up to them what to call, right?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we need clarification, it's there to.
And if you're making a flyer, maybe check with them?
Yeah, I was doing one for the farmer's market, but I did one for the sponsorship for concerts in the park.
They didn't say anything?
No, I think, yeah, I did change it to Saturday, that's right, cause I had a draft, and they said, no, we're changing it to Saturdays in the Park. The, uh, clarification for me, because Mary Ann asked, and I see it's noted in here, the equipment that's in the cook shacks, or, or not cook shacks, but the buildings.
Along to the line.
Okay, so when they wanna use that, they need to get permission from the Lions book.
Yep.
That's what I told her.
Cause they are planning on doing hamburgers, hot dogs, I don't think they'll be a problem, since I'm done with IGA, and I can go to Lions meetings now, I can find that. What are you gonna do with your stuff, you have all this free time? Uh, Kim already mentioned about the EMS supervisor, which I didn't even know about, and Thursday, we have our next EMS meeting, uh, that'll be in Shrewsbury Township.
When is the chase truck going away?
Soon.
See, as soon, I think this is the last one.
They've asked for it to be returned, and it's really a thought of just.
How does that impact us?
With all the chase truck.
It's a good fact, what we have.
Yep. You know. Which I, which I do not like.
It would be nice to know.
Basically, if we could find a suburban.
Well, it'd be nice to know, I mean, I think, I mean, they've gotta have a log of how they used it, and, I mean.
It's really sad that she went away.
Okay.
Cause I was looking forward to like having like a report on the chase truck did this and this, and we saved this person, and blah, 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 so now we don't have anything. We'll discuss, okay. Alright, um. You have something, subsequent centennial you wanna talk about?
Let me, I can, I can say that I was on contact with Summit Group, and they're coming up with, with a plan of what they can do. And also, I talked to a gentleman about a baseball game. In other words, it'd be the old-fashioned baseball games, you know, with the old uniforms and.
Do that on my get it program.
Yep, so I'm talking, so he's, right now, he's doing some of the research on what, what he can come up with, and I'm gonna try to find some of those uniforms if I can.
So that's the ba, that's the alumni game?
Yeah, that's the alumni game, that's one of them, even I were talking about.
Yeah, so they're gonna just have the uniform from back in the day.
Well, maybe, we're gonna see how far back we can get, but, I mean, it's even something from the fifties, cause I remember when I, when I used to play, you had high socks and bagged beans.
Alright, we're gonna have to, Ryan's falling asleep.
I'm falling asleep.
Alright, does anyone have anything under committees that, that we need to?
Just for Anna and Roberta Mill, I wasn't gonna email you, I just, I had taken Shrewsbury Borough, Stewartstown Borough and Glenroch Borough, they all went well. I, I heard Stewartstown Borough, did they call and ask you about the G I, the, uh, the mapping of the borough?
G I O?
Not yet, but they, maybe they just.
Okay, they talked about doing that, I said, you know, we just did that, maybe we can get some good information, so, kinda doing that friendship kind of.
Yeah, we actually had that same conversation with, uh, football, they were looking, and we referred our consultants then, and they're actually working with them.
Quick, quick question, did Glenroch Borough reschedule their town hall or not?
To my knowledge, they, they did that at the meeting that night.
Okay, already covered correspondence, um, I guess the only other thing, thing I wanted to mention was, if you want, I, I, I think it's a good idea. Go through the equipment list, the trucks, and figure out, maybe we should look at whatever for farming things out, subbing things out in the future.
I think it'd also be a good idea if only many scholars came up with a list of what they have.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's a good idea.
Ten thirty and I'm still working.
I, I, you know, I'll tell you, I'll tell you, Brian, you know, we put together that.
I recommend highly, great time in retirement.
Uh, Brian came up to me at one of the IGA meetings, and he said that, uh, what we did with the snow removal and, uh, and plowing certain, those areas for them. For snow removal was great too, so, and we get reimbursed by PennDOT for that, so. So that was a, that was a good move for us, and a good move for them, so there's a lot of things we could like do synergistically, so.
Andrew. I want Andrew to stick you, so you can say, can I?
Anybody at Pines, uh, adjournment?